Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission. We'd like to get started. We have quite a heavy agenda this evening. The Planning Commission of the Township of Abington is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The action of the Planning Commission on any agenda item does not reflect a final decision. The Board of Commissioners must render the final action on all agenda items. Mr. DeCello.
Excuse.
Excuse.
Ms. Gautier.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Robinson, excused. Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Rosen, excused. Mr. Russell, excused but will join us later. Mr. Baugh.
Here.
And myself. Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd just like to ask anyone that is speaking tonight to please speak clearly and make sure your microphone is turned on. We are being filmed tonight, and it's very difficult for everyone to hear if you're not speaking into the microphone. Thank you. This is, the first application is the application of Harice Yarone and Jennifer Park. Excuse me if I did not say those names correctly. Owners of the property located at 936 Morden Road and Aynke Hips Fight and Seth Fight, owners of the property located at 979 Dale Road, Meadow Brook, Pennsylvania. The plan proposes to transfer 6,120 square feet of ground from 936 Morden Road to 979 Dale Road. 936 Morden Road will be reduced in size from 3.39 acres to 3.25 acres in lot size. 979 Dale Road will be increased from 1.25 acres to 1.39 acres in total lot area. No other alterations are proposed to either property. Both properties will comply with the dimensional requirements of Section 302, Figure 3.1 of the zoning ordinance of the Township of Abington. Are the applicants here tonight, and would they like to make a presentation?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Wonder. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild here on behalf of the applicants. We're seeking approval of a lot line change plan based on the transfer of approximately 6,000 square feet from the property at 936 Morden Road to 979 Dale Road. The 936 Morden Road property was here previously for a similar lot line change plan. We're seeking several waivers for this plan, but otherwise, the property complies with all dimensional requirements. And with me tonight is Nick Rose, the project engineer, who can answer any questions that the commission might have about the plan.
Okay. Could you go through the waivers for us, please?
Sure.
Sure. Nick Rose from Protract. The first few are just information within 400 feet. They are 14611A, 14611B. The next one is for street trees. The area is actually extensively wooded, so that's 14611H. 14611L is because we have no proposed structures. There is no architecture, so we're asking for a waiver of that. 14624D is for the right-of-way width of the adjacent streets, which we do not believe need to be widened. 146-27 is for curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the frontage streets. Again, this is simply a lot line change to coordinate with existing features. 146-38 is for any additional street lighting. The streets are more country lane in nature than they are suburban streets. And in the staff letter, they had added one, 146-30, having to do with lot shape because the proposed lot line to go around the existing features goes in something of an irregular shape. So those are the waivers.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy?
I have a question regarding why is it jogged? Like, is that the existing line? That's a proposed line, the solid one, right?
The solid line is the proposed. The jog, you see, I believe, is around the tennis court because the zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot setback from the tennis court. So the tennis court is to remain on the Morden Road property, but the land adjacent to it is to go to the Dale Road property.
Okay. And then the existing, what is it, flagstone walkways that currently go up, they're just going to remain now on the Dale Road property?
Correct. That whole area in what's sort of a triangular shape would then be owned by the Dale Road property.
Okay. And then, I just had a question to regarding the two stone circular walls on the new property line. Are they wells? I couldn't figure out what they were.
I think they are just decorative.
What are they?
They're just decorative items of stone. They're not anything structural, or they're not wells.
Okay. But they're traversing the new property line? Is that going to be a problem down the line?
They are on the property line, but they can easily be moved. They're just...
They can be moved? Okay. So they're not fixed on the ground?
They may be fixed just in the sense that they're a stone wall, but they're not something that would be difficult to move or would be problematic between neighbors.
All right. I just want to make sure I don't see you again on this property. So, but it looks like you're following the fence line for the most part, and then I did notice, you know, that it was going in, you know, right on where the round stone walls were. So I was just curious as to whether that was taken into consideration.
Yes. It used to be that these two properties were owned by the same family.
Right.
So they sort of just did things the way they felt like doing them, and now we're trying to make the property lines agree with that.
Okay. And just the last thing was, was there previously a note on the plan saying no further subdivision lots or something?
What you might be thinking of is the issue of the sidewalk. And we do have extended wording about the sidewalk that we will put on the plan prior to it going to the board that says that they can't ask for a waiver of sidewalk if they come in for an additional lot.
Okay.
I think that's what you're thinking of.
I knew there was kind of something.
But yes, we understand the Board of Commissioners will be looking for that language, and that will be on there.
All right. So I would just say that that be part of our recommendation.
That if there's a further lot subdivision?
Yeah, that...
And currently, there are no sidewalks in that neighborhood at all.
Right.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission or questions?
No.
Okay. I do not have any. Is there anyone attending tonight that would like to comment on this or ask a question on this application? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot line change subject and the waivers as well as requested and add the, you know, the sidewalk note on.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Because the tennis courts...
Okay. Our second agenda item is the application of the Metaplex Property Group, LLC, for the properties located at 1863 and 1865 Guernsey Avenue, 1854 and 1856 Eckert Avenue, and 1137, 1141, 1145, and 1151 Old York Road, Abington. The applicant proposes a reverse subdivision for the purpose of merging the eight properties into one deed. In addition, land development approval is required for the construction of a proposed two-story medical office building totaling 20,000 square feet. The proposed development will have limited access drives on both Guernsey and Eckert Avenues. The applicant proposes 100 onsite parking stalls, onsite stormwater management, and 20-foot wide residential buffer. A special exception was granted by the zoning hearing board of the township for the medical office use and to allow vehicle parking within a portion of the property zoned within the R4 residential district. The balance of the property is zoned within the Main Street Village Center District of Ward Number 7 of the Township of Abington. And I believe the applicant is here, and would you like to make a presentation to us?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Marcel Grown. I'm also from Fox Rothschild. I think we're going to bring the entire firm in a few minutes. We were here, I guess, last month. We pretty much gave our presentation. You had some questions and some issues, many of which we will let you know that we've, we will be complying with, and you may have some other questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lynn, who will go through all of the issues that you presented and that we modified.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm going to, Bob Lynn, for the record, the architect in charge of the project. We had about a half a dozen questions, which we responded to from the last Planning Commission meeting. A few of them were relative to how we would handle certain curb cuts. There was a request to soften the radius of the curb cut on both the flanking streets, and we've done that in both capacities. There was a request to change the radius of the curb cut between Old York and the adjacent streets. There was a request to actually designate two patient drop-off spaces in front of the site, which we've actually done. They're designated, had inpatient drop-off. There was a request to designate a loading space specifically, which we've done. We've taken care of all those comments, I believe, to the satisfaction of the commission. There was also a request, could we save a portion of the stone wall, which is currently on Old York Road? And we actually can save 70 linear feet of the stone wall, not the portion directly at the intersection of Guernsey because there's a curve section which we are constructing an accessible curb cut for PennDOT standards, and there's also some stormwater inlet work being done. But we can save 70 linear feet along the front, and we're happy to do so if that's the desire of the commission, to give a nod to the pass, if you will.
And assuming PennDOT will approve that.
Assuming the...
Could you outline where that would be again on that map for me?
It is literally in this section of Old York Road. There's a curve piece we will not be able to save. We can save a 70-foot section. If you recall, we were introducing a street wall with pillars and a fence. We would leave the wall in lieu of the street wall, and we would still keep the street wall on the rest of the site. So it's available to us to do so. Again, PennDOT may have a question on it, but we'll make sure that, you know, that's addressed in appropriate capacity.
Want to talk about the pork chop?
The, I think they were the basic questions. There was also a question, I guess, one of the big topics was, would we introduce a verge, a landscape verge of three feet between the edge of the curb and the sidewalk? The sidewalk's currently 10 feet wide. Most of the sidewalk, in particular, up in this section here. Would you mind giving me an aerial map of it? Most of the 3D image. The sidewalk up in this section is one continuous curb cut. If you recall, E. Allen Reeves had it, and it's almost curb cut to curb cut. So we're rebuilding the sidewalk either way. If the township and the Planning Commission recommends to introduce a three-foot verge, we will do it. We've found from experience, they don't survive, especially when you're close to the highway with the salt and the snow. It's less expensive for us to actually put the verge in. Our experience tells us to put it on the inbound side against the street wall, against the image of the building, and still have a legitimate amount of vegetation, but have the sidewalk right to the curb. So strictly your recommendation will follow.
The other thing is, if we do it this way, the sidewalk will be eight feet wide as opposed to the normal five feet, so that should give people plenty of room.
Well, we're currently at 10 feet of width on the sidewalk, so...
Well, it fluctuates between 10 and eight because of the...
Correct.
10 feet with the verge or without it?
Without it.
Without it?
Yes.
Yeah. On that particular point, I know the Montgomery County Planning Commission did recommend the verge planning as per our ordinance. And I did go out there, and also from the nice stack we got last month or two, on sheet A5A, A6C, A6D, there's all some existing areas shown as verge, as well as if you go up to the hospital, there's either brick, planted trees, different things. And I think one of the ideas of the ordinance was to kind of separate you from Old York Road, because when you're walking on there, it's noisy. I mean, I see people walking on it, and I think if you had a little bit of something, whether, and you know, with the snow, you can have plants that are tolerant of snow. You could do annuals, perennials, various things, I think, would tie in nicely with the little plaza that you're also proposing.
Well, again, we'll follow your lead on it. I've just had bad experience with a three-foot strip right against the highway with the snow and the salt. And as I drove up here this evening again, everyone that's out there is like browned-out grass and cigarette butts and mess. It's just not pretty.
You weren't at the same area as I were, was, because I saw...
It was a different township.
Yeah.
Definitely not Abington township.
But I mean, I do understand some, you know, people do litter, cigarettes, et cetera. But the other, if I, I don't know if anybody else wants to come in on the verge?
I actually prefer the verge, too. I think it softens what's a very hardscape there. I'd prefer to see the verge there.
Done. Not a problem.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay. The only other thing we did, we did reduce the parking spaces. Originally, it was 101. It went to 100. Went down to 97, working with Chris McMahon, our traffic engineer, Chris Williams with Man Associates. We actually widened the, lengthened the throat opening there to make sure it was enough distance. So we took three spaces off, but we are still over the ratio required by zoning. So that was probably the only other significant change.
Is the township traffic engineer good with that and also with the radius softening on Guernsey?
I'll let Chris speak to that if I could. I mean, I know they've had a lot of interface.
Well, I don't want to necessarily put words in your traffic engineer's mouth. He is here this evening, but we have coordinated, and I think he'll tell you that he's comfortable with the plan and the changes that we've made.
So I have his letter right in front of me. Are the design details that he asked for for the ADA compliant wraps, ramps, available? Has he been able to see those?
Not as of yet. So next step in the process will be design of improvements within the PennDOT right-of-way as well as all of the ADA designs. So we would agree to provide that information to the township as a condition.
Okay. I'll continue with his comments. Provide a no-left-turn sign opposite the proposed Eckert Avenue driveway. Ensure that this sign, as well as the proposed one-way sign, are not placed within the existing sidewall.
And that is fine. We would agree with that.
Okay. While there is an existing no-parking here-to-corner sign located midway between the proposed Guernsey Avenue driveway location and Old York Road, it is our recommendation that this sign be removed and replaced with two evenly spaced no-parking signs to prohibit parking within the entire distance.
And we would agree with that as well.
Provide a four-inch painted double-yellow center line 50 feet in length on Guernsey Avenue at its intersection with Old York Road.
That would be a will comply. And what I would offer is there, that's the second letter. Your traffic engineer had issued an earlier letter that had many more comments, but we did work through most of those comments, made some of the plan revisions that Mr. Lynn spoke of, and I think we've come a long way in addressing the township traffic engineer's concerns to where we are this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, are there any other concerns that you have that we should address now, or are you fine with what the applicant has been giving to you so far?
If they address the comments that are remaining in the memorandum, our review of memorandum, then I am satisfied with the plan from the traffic perspective.
Yeah. Mr. Richardson, regarding the Guernsey where Kung-Fu Tea is, that, it's more than a 90-degree turn, right turn in there. And I know on the other side, they're doing the 15-foot radius, which I assume you're okay with. Yeah, right in there. But on the other corner, yeah, since, is there any township plans or anything to make that a little less, the angle of it? I guess when you're turning in there, it's pretty, you kind of go into the other lane. And I think the striping will help, but since it's off-site, that's why I'm asking him.
We specifically have not discussed that from a staff level, whether that would be an improvement that we would, township would ask to be implemented. I will caution you there, though, the only concern that we would have, while that would be a good improvement, much like what we recommended at the other corner, because it has the same angle, is that I believe there's limited right-of-way in that area, and the applicant would have to go out and inquire that right-of-way from them. While that's not a major concern from our, you know, township's perspective, that may be something that the applicant may not be able to acquire.
Well, yeah, and I realize it would be an off-site improvement that they're not going to do, but I didn't know if there was anything the township could do within the right-of-way to soften the curve on the Kung-Fu Tea side.
Yeah. Without, well, without increasing the radius itself and doing something similar to what they're proposing, which we have recommended in a similar fashion, the, one of the reasons why we had recommended the double-yellow was to better define that area to, so cars don't swing all the way out when someone's already waiting there.
Right.
Or if someone's approaching the intersection. And that also, we were, we're softening this radius, which I'll call the northeast radius at that intersection, to just, again, try to do things that they have the ability, within their ability, to do within the right-of-way. Certainly, that's something that, you know, from a township's perspective, we could continue to look at, but that is really the township staff and boards...
The commissioners, right.
Yes, yes.
And you're okay with the 15-foot rather than 20-foot? That was first in your letter, I think.
Yeah. We recommended a more desirable radius, but we did take into account, there's some existing...
There's the wall.
There's the wall with, and there's also two stormwater inlets that would have to be completely replaced, which could, in some cases, snowball effect, create a small-ball effect. And then you end up having to replace pipes, and where does it end at that point? Where this is the opportunity for the township to, in my viewpoint, to ask the applicant to fix an existing deficiency that would not only benefit the township, but also the customers for this office building.
Okay. Good.
We did add the pork chop at your recommendation, which is right there with the concerns of the one-way traffic, that people would say, oh, it's a short way to Old York, and just make a quick left out, so we added the pork chop that forces you to make the right-hand turn onto Eckert. Therefore, you know, minus sight, you can't follow the line of sight. You have to make the right-hand turn. So that was one of your suggestions we did.
And the left-turn sign was also not only to reinforce that you can't go back out to Old York Road, but we also didn't want anybody to shoot straight across to the parking lot and use that as a cut-through.
Yeah. I was, you know, never mind.
Yeah. That was the thinking behind that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission?
Unfortunately, I have two more. The bus stop was brought up by the county, and I think you were going to address that.
Yeah. We are definitely going to have dialogue with SEPTA. We'd be surprised if they would move it because they have one flanking on both blocks on either side of us, but we'll certainly ask the question.
You mean across the street, or?
Same side.
Same side. There's one that, not far north and not far south, so...
Well, there's, not until you get up to Horace, I don't think. There's not one at Eckert or...
We will ask, but believe me, I've asked SEPTA to move bus stops on previous occasions, and it's like pushing a rope through a garden hose. It doesn't happen very easily. We will ask the question as part of our application, because we'd be fine for us...
Because the YMCA currently has a mid-block and then up at Susquehanna.
Susquehanna, yeah.
But I would like to ask the county planner, since you probably deal with SEPTA more than any of us here, what's the process for the township? If we, like, down the road thought it would be a good spot for a bus stop?
Well, there is a formalized sort of ask/request process that SEPTA then takes into account, and during the annual service plan, planning, they sort of assess it, and then come the summertime, sort of when they finalize that, that's sort of when, when that decision sort of comes through. I mean, there's internal deliberations on their side, but it's sort of, in the principle of it, in theory, our transportation section chief does sort of agree with that sort of idea. Obviously, SEPTA needs to be on board as well, but it's something that we sort of, in principle, would agree with.
Could it be something like after six months, I'm assuming, you know, this is built, that we can, the township could then ask SEPTA if they, or how could we...
It could be built into a condition of approval should the, you know, should the board or the Planning Commission decide to recommend that.
That's something I would like to see, because there's a crosswalk right there, too, to the township building and to some other things.
We agreed to ask you. I just can't promise the delivery.
Well, no, I know, but to make it a condition, I think that might be wise.
I'm not sure if you make it a condition...
Do we ask?
What?
We have no problem asking.
We have no problem with the condition being asked. We can't guarantee the delivery of that.
Right. I understand that. What would, Brian, what would your suggested wording be?
Just the request, obviously, you know, it shouldn't be contingent upon necessarily the moving of it, the approval, but I think to condition upon the ask, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
How you guys feel about that?
I don't think we can do anything until the question is asked. I mean, it's a constantly changing environment. If bus stop locations get moved, you do the best to deal with them after.
But to be proactive, I'm thinking.
We will ask.
Okay. Thank you.
We agreed to that last month, in October. We will ask.
I'd like to discuss a few more of the comments from the county, one being street furniture and where every 100 feet under, land that's under common ownership, there should be bike racks and planters every 50 feet. Have you addressed any of those comments?
Well, we do have the little plaza in front of our building, which we introduced right here, and we gave you some photographs of it, so we believe we have complied with the plaza, and that there is seating, there's bench seating on that location. I don't think there's a specific bike rack. I mean, if that's something the township wants to ask for, we could certainly work it in.
Okay. And I'd also like to address historic preservation. So I'm very thankful that you were able to save part of that wall, but there've been a lot of folks in the township who've asked us numerous times about some of these older buildings, and not just this particular application, but others. And there is no protection in Abington right now for any historic buildings.
Right.
We're in the middle of a historic resource survey, which is the first step in heritage planning. Once we have that completed, we can discuss whether or not the township's interested in a historic district ordinance. So that would be the next step. But as of right now, for any application in Abington, there is no protection for a historic building.
I got it.
So I just would like to point that out to everybody that's here tonight.
But we, again, you know, I do a lot of work that is of historic nature, and I do a lot of adaptive reuse.
Yes.
These particular buildings were not lending themselves well towards a modern medical in particular. The problem is size. Also, the older buildings are always elevated, so accessibility into them is always problematic. However, we have offered, and we continue to offer, if there is anything of value, architectural salvage in the buildings, if representative of the township or the county would like to go through the buildings and identify components of the building, whether it's a fireplace, hearth, or a mantel, or some other decorative bracket, they're welcome to do so. And if the county, at the county's cost or the township's cost, would like to arrange to have those removed prior to us working, we're fine with that as well.
Thank you. We may take you up on that, and we'd also like to go in and document the building.
Certainly.
We've done that on numerous occasions, just with photographs and maybe some basic measurements.
Very valid.
But thank you for the opportunity.
Very valid.
Okay. Any other comments that you'd like to address or points from the Planning Commission? Questions? No? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? And please step forward and give us your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone.
Hi. Lisa Brown-Holz. I live at 1812 Eckert Avenue. And I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting because we were only given one day's notice of the commissioners' meeting. Half of our block is Commissioner Sanchez, who did give us a day's notice, and the other half is another commissioner who gave the residents no notice to that meeting. I just wanted to know what's been, what is going to happen with the traffic coming down Eckert? We'd asked for possible speed bumps. We'd asked for possible lowering of the speed limit, and I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay. I think we can have the applicant address that, but I know we are talking about traffic calming measures.
Traffic calming, yes.
Our position is that we can do, that it's up to the township. However, we've offered to help, we've offered to help pay for some of those calming things if that's what you determine. I know that the township itself has got some issues with them, but that's outside of our jurisdiction, really.
Okay.
So how did the residents go about having that conversation?
So that's a conversation with your commissioner and with town staff.
We have, and nothing has been done. So how did the residents go about having that conversation?
So that's a conversation with your commissioner and with town staff.
We have, and nothing has been done.
Okay, is there anyone here tonight from staff that would like to address that, or give this individual a time for a meeting, or how she can contact everyone to set up another meeting?
Hi, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good.
Hello, Richard Manfredi, Township Manager. I can tell you that...
Good evening.
How are you today?
Fine, thank you.
I can tell you that this is a subject from the Board Commissioner, and it has been discussed at staff meetings, and the township is interested in seeing speed tables at that location, and that I'm sure will be a subject at the December thirteenth Board of Commissioners' meeting.
December thirteenth?
Thursday night.
Another meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manfredi.
You're welcome.
And also, when we had our, I guess our, what was that first meeting, the town meeting you guys had for us, when we all, all the residents got together? We were talking about the hours of the actual office building, and that it was going to be closed at five o'clock? And then is...
I hesitate to say five, probably more like six.
Okay, and then is the lot going to be closed after that? There was word that they were possibly going to have it as like an overflow for the hospital parking, and the residents asked for, I'm sorry. Yes, there was mention that the hospital was going to be, yes.
I don't think we have...
Yes.
We want to be good neighbors to the township, and we want to be good neighbors to the hospital. Nothing's been worked out, we certainly would be amenable to it if it's important, especially to the township, but that's where we are right now. We have no plans on it.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no plan, so that won't happen then? It won't become like on the weekends, a lot for hospital, or?
All we can tell you is what we heard tonight, there are no current plans. Again, this is something you should address with your local commissioner, and perhaps you can mention that at the December thirteenth meeting.
Okay. And then can you clarify, when coming off of Eckerd Avenue, you're saying that they have to make the right, they're not allowed to cut through the parking lot? Is that what I heard from?
Technically, that's correct. Now, obviously, we can't control that, it's not on our property.
Right.
But what we're doing is when we come out of the parking lot, there's going to be a pork chop, so the cars are necessarily going to go towards the right, there'll be a sign that says no left turn. If somebody violates that, they can be ticketed.
Okay. And what happens after tonight's, how do the residents get your recommendations before Thursday's meeting?
You will hear our recommendation tonight.
Oh, tonight?
We're going to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners tonight, we are an advisory group, so we make a recommendation, but it is not binding, it is up to the town commissioners to make the final decision.
And that's Thursday?
The December thirteenth, is that?
Right.
Yeah, right here, too.
And that was all because of the snowstorm that
Right.
pushed everything back.
Right, okay, because I was confused, because they had the meeting last week before this meeting, which usually you have a planning, you go to Planning Commission, and then you have that meeting.
Right, as a result of that, the committee did not make a recommendation, because they were not going to make a recommendation before they heard from the board.
And it's always a good idea to check the town website, because the information's very up to date on that.
Right. When the commissioner doesn't even know about it, though, how are the residents supposed to know about it?
I can't answer that.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
It's all right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Joe Rozak, I live at 1927 Susquehanna Road. I just have a couple comments. First of all, no left turn sign. I've got one across the street from my house. Nobody follows it, no one has ever gotten a ticket, even the police make a left-hand turn there, but that's just an aside, all right? And this is, I know that, but people are people. They're, my concern is, there are three entryways, not one of them indicates which, from what I can tell here, which is the pre...
There are only two.
Two, what's that?
There's an entryway here, sir, and that's...
I'm talking about the entry to the building.
Oh, no.
Inviting people inside.
There's one, there's one entryway, and in fact, let me pull up the facade.
The picture you showed had one in the front.
That's because, that's because the ordinance in the township requires to have at least the reference to a door on Old York Road as part of the streetscape.
Now, that's an invitation to stop there.
Well, there's a little pedestrian plaza that you certainly can sit there, but that's...
No, no, I'm talking about delivery trucks, I'm talking about taxi cabs. Where are you going to drop off any kind of patients? I'm concerned about that. It's a minor detail, but it's a big headache. Let me finish.
Well, I thought you wanted to, I thought you wanted to mention.
I just want to finish what I'm commenting on. I've seen this happening all around here. The delivery trucks don't turn in, they pull on the sidewalk. They're going to pull up in front of that building, on Old York Road. They're going to pull up in front, no, you've got two parking spaces in front of that other entryway. That's not an invitation to an entryway. So you've got to make it, because cars will park there, and when you're going to have a delivery truck, these are minor details that are going to be headaches. You need to plan that, this is a planning commission. You look forward to the future. I can see things happening, and I look at that. You need to address that. That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you.
Can you show us where the delivery truck and the drop-off is?
Certainly, I mean, the delivery space is right here, I'm referring to, the sidewalk into the building is up there, the main entrance door is right here. The door is required, architectural standards to be on Old York Road, it is only an emergency exit door, it's not frankly an entrance door. All, it's a two-story building, as you know, everybody enters there, there's a common lobby, there's an elevator to the second floor, there's a stairway to the second floor, and then the business is, you know, spread off from that point.
So is that door on the front of the building
It's the next and only.
able to be opened?
From the...
Someone from the outside?
No.
So any delivery truck would not park there, then, because they cannot gain
Correct.
entrance into that door?
Correct.
They'll learn quickly if they try, and then they'll go into the parking lot.
Correct. There's a designated delivery space in good proximity to the door, within the parking field.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment or question this application?
Good evening, I'm Holly Perry, I live at 1847 Gernsy Avenue. I've lived there for more than forty-five years, so I've seen changes over time, but one thing has remained constant. The traffic situation on Gernsy Avenue has only continued to get worse. It's a one and a half width street. There's parking on one side, and then there are three-quarters lanes. When you get to the area of Old York Road and Gernsy Avenue, you can only go right, and while you sit there, you hope to God the person coming up Old York Road understands that it's more than a ninety-degree turn. There literally is not a way to do it unless both cars know the dance. The person at the corner backs up, the person on Old York Road swings wide, comes to a stop and swings wide and comes in. So that's one issue that I don't see addressed, I don't quite know whose bailiwick it falls into, maybe several. The other concern I have is that if I'm understanding the diagram correctly, the egress from the building onto Gernsy Avenue, cars can go either to the west or to the east. Is that correct? There's not a pork chop?
That's correct.
That is to me a great concern. There are kids on the block, there are people walking dogs, et cetera, and so forth. The leaves didn't get collected, people put their leaves on the other side of the street, there are many things that make that a difficult situation. I don't see giving people the option, why not have it so that they must go to Old York Road and turn right? And fix that more than ninety-degree turn, so that there's better flow at that point, and people are forced to go up. We're already dealing with all the people who are dodging the light at Old York Road in Susquehanna. I can tell you which police officers get off at what time, because they come up, they may come up Vinegar Hill, hang a right, hang a left, and scream up. They're not the only ones, they're not the only ones. Everybody does it to avoid the stoplight. So anything that can be done by anybody or everybody to address that issue, we have talked with the commissioner over three or four years, I know of at least three other families on Gernsy Avenue, who have asked for speed bumps, for traffic calming. Nothing has happened, absolutely nothing has happened. It's getting worse.
Could the applicant re-go over the striping that's proposed on Gernsy?
Sure, we are proposing stripes from Old York Road into Gernsley, double yellow line, so that it's clearly marked for people coming in and out, and they would have to cross a double yellow line. It's not perfect, but it's a heck of a big improvement over what it is now.
There's also a softening of the radius, which means traffic accidenting is there, that radius has been changed completely. So, I mean, that automatically helps that situation with a car leaving and a car entering.
Do you understand that? I don't understand the radius part.
Okay, we'll show you.
Are you talking about clipping the corner there?
A little bit, yeah, not tremendous amount, but certainly a little bit, we're curving it much more than we were before.
So, Gernsy Avenue in this section, it's twenty-two feet wide, so it is two lanes wide, and there is no parking along this section of Gernsy Avenue, and that's one of the comments in the township's traffic review letter, is to maintain that no parking. So there is reasonable width in this area to accommodate two lanes of traffic. So to further emphasize the need to accommodate two lanes of traffic, the engineer has recommended striping a double yellow line, as simple a solution as that may be, it will go a long way to keeping traffic within its lane and help accommodate the opposing flow of traffic. And then, secondly, this radius at this intersection today, it's only, it's only an eight-foot radius, it's going to be more than doubled, it'll be about doubled, it'll be a fifteen-foot radius when we're finished. So increasing that radius, it'll soften that corner, and it'll make it easier for traffic exiting Gernsy Avenue to make the right turn onto northbound Old York Road. That's really about as much as can be done within the onsite improvements with this project.
Could I just, what, so if you're saying it's a two-lane road, then I assume, and it's twenty-two feet wide, then it's eleven feet for each lane?
Correct.
How wide is the common parking space?
There won't be any parking at that level, from the exit of the building to Old York Road, there will be no parking.
I realize that your responsibility is indeed only to your property. You're suggesting that people coming out right at the edge of your property are turning, can turn left, can turn left into a twenty-two-foot wide street?
Correct.
So...
And that's the same, that's the same location the driveway has existed all these years for both of those buildings that were on Old York Road. The driveway location on Gernsy is the same place that the driveway has existed for the old insurance building and the center building, because they had a rear parking lot.
They never had the potential traffic that is rightfully yours to have. I'm still wondering, how wide is the township allotment for parallel parking lane?
You mean along the street?
Yeah, any street.
I can tell you that typically in a situation like this, you're going to see the width of a parking area about seven feet wide, seven to eight feet wide, in a denser setting, I'd say it's more like seven feet wide, so it would leave you about fifteen feet for traveling.
So fifteen feet for a two-lane road?
No, because there won't be parking allowed along that way.
But they will turn right at the edge of their corner of their property, they may make a left-hand turn into a two-way road that's fifteen feet wide.
There's only rights, isn't there?
No.
Wait, where's the left?
It's full movement at this location.
Oh, there, I was looking at Old York.
On the Gernsy Avenue, sir.
I was looking at Old York.
That's my concern.
Okay, so you're concerned about the lefts out?
If a standard lane is eleven feet, you're now saying that they may turn into what in fact will be a seven and a half-foot lane.
This is the current condition I, that you have, yes.
There are...
But the volume, potential volume of traffic in this new facility is exponentially higher than what was ever there at Reeves', and there was a medical building or insurance company. I mean, I saw, I walk there, I see it, there were, if there were ten cars total in that property at a given time.
So I believe the applicant is doing what they can do, and I think any other measures would be up to the township to take.
Well, you're the Township Planning Board.
We are the Planning Commission, and my suggestion, as it was to the other woman that spoke earlier on this same issue, is to come to the Board of Commissioners' meeting on December thirteenth.
Was it my understanding that you make, you all make a recommendation?
We will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners tonight, that's correct.
But you... My concern is that you make note of my concern.
You would like to see that second access way onto Gernsy to be right out only, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we can decide whether or not we agree with that.
Yeah, can we ask our traffic engineer his comments on that?
That's a good idea.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I don't think I'm going to say anything.
Since you're here.
You're sitting there quietly, so.
Put my feet to the fire. Well, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. The issue with the width of the road, if you widen the road to provide a wider lane, like twenty feet plus parking, you tend to increase speeds on the road, and I don't think you really want that on those roads. Well, it's already a concern, I'm sure, for the neighbors that people cut through there and travel at high rates of speed, that's the perception that the neighbors have. So we have to be careful about that. As far as the exiting left turn vehicles, just based on the volume itself, it's not a very high volume coming out making the left turns. I think the applicant had provided a table before, or a graphic that showed, and their traffic study shows that there isn't an inordinate amount of left turns that are during the peak hours, and that's what we look at as the highest, meaning the highest volumes during the worst conditions in terms of the traffic. So therefore, we did not see that as an issue. I'm sure the neighbors don't see it that way, but from a transportation planning standpoint, the volumes themselves, what we have been presented to the township, is really, I wouldn't call it de minimis, but it's at a level that I, we don't believe it will have a significant impact.
We expect most of the traffic, to the extent that exists, will go to Old York Road. If there is a, if we can't make the left-hand turn on the Gernsley, that to the extent people want to go in that direction, they're going to go at Eckerd, so then the people on Eckerd are going to tell you, you're increasing the volume on their street, it's a problem, but it's a small problem in the sense that there are very few cars, based upon our research. These are offices which are staggered throughout the day. There's no, at the end of the day, there will be some people who will leave in terms of having been employed there, but that's the extent of it. This is not a heavy-duty office building that closes at five o'clock and everybody leaves at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this application?
Tim McCann, 1821 Eckerd Avenue. I just wanted to briefly address something that Lisa had said about parking. I think, I think the concern of the people that I've talked to is that people using that lot in off-hours are going to be cutting down the streets, so it would be the preference of the neighbors, and this is for you guys, that the lot, if the lot were like marked as private property or no parking, something like that, you know, where you don't have a ton of people coming through, parking in that lot on a Saturday afternoon when the office is closed, and then cutting back down through when all the kids are playing in the neighborhood. That, that's, I kind of felt like that was a little bit misunderstood when she was told to take that to the next meeting, but that is the concern.
We could look at a sign saying private property.
Great.
Again, we have to be a little careful because there are a number, depending on the tenants and stuff like that, but we can figure that out.
The towing companies will probably provide you a free sign.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then we get through.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, I just want one clarification, a pointed clarification, is that on the plan that we reviewed as a part of our letter on November, I think it was fifth, and it was a plan dated October twenty-third, obviously there have been revisions to this plan, which is understandable at this time, but on the plan that I have, there is, on the parking island to the right of the screen, there was provided a couple sidewalks, as well as a crossing that led across the one-way lane there to the office building, and it doesn't seem to be there currently, I'm just, again, I'm sorry if it had been previously, you know, talked about, but it is not yet included on this plan.
Yeah, the last plan did have the internal walkway.
Well, again, it's a very small parking lot, it's smaller than the parking lot we're in here today, and all this parking in the very back is staff parking and designated by signage. So anybody walking from the back of the site is strictly staffed before hours and after hours, walking into the building, so we didn't have any intention of starting to do any major league striping within the parking lot. This is a one-directional driveway island, if you can see over your shoulder, and it's certainly wide enough, you could stripe it up there, but again, we don't want to narrow it down, because we want to have full vehicle movement for emergency access for fire trucks and other emergency, plus a trash truck, so we don't...
Your last plan, page C4, right where that second one-way arrow is, where you had the light, right, yeah, there was like a walk, a designated walkway to the sidewalk from there.
From here, across here?
Yeah, well, yeah, up to the island.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, if that's what you want. I don't have a problem cross-striping it.
I have the plan.
That has it on it? The C4, right?
Your plan.
Yeah, I don't... Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
But the new plan, I don't think, has that.
That's fine, we'll take care of it.
We will make sure we get an extra can of paint out there. We're on it.
Well, I think there was also, and this might be Brian's point, looks like there was a little bit of sidewalk along that island.
I don't believe there ever was sidewalk there.
Mark, on yours?
You want to take away some green space?
It was a plan that was provided to us. And actually, it doesn't take away the green space. It does narrow the lane a bit.
Right, correct.
It says, it does say a 12-foot lane leading from the back.
We want a 14-foot lane there for travel. Go ahead.
You look at that position.
Yeah, basically, because of the trash truck maneuvers, truck maneuvers, you're going to go down that aisle and turn back around, the width has to be about 15 to 16 feet. As stated per code, it's allowed to be necked down to 12. So, what we can do is basically stripe a four-foot-wide pedestrian pathway on the outbound side that would run basically where the pointer is and then head down to the sidewalk. It's striped, so that way, in the event of a large truck, has the ability to swing. From a pedestrian safety standpoint, as stated, all of the stalls in that back corner.
They're all staffed parking. Your plan, your image cuts off the rest of the parking lot. The dumpsters, sort of where it says "create there."
Yeah. So, all that staffed is parking. So, basically, you're going to be in the, you park there in the morning, and then you leave at night. Everyone knows how that functions. And there is ample lighting in that area. But basically, to meet the landscape ordinance requirements of all the green space, vegetation, the trees, and things like that, and to provide the access for the trash truck, I can't, we can't physically neck that down to 12 feet.
What do you think, Brian?
Well, if it's a matter of, I mean, ultimately up to the township, but, you know, from an engineering standpoint, if the turn can't be made or if it is made difficult, I think there's some compromise, at least, in...
Striping?
In striping or sort of altering the island a bit to be more amenable.
We've indicated we'll do some striping.
I'll get a second can of paint out and I'll straight the rest of the crosswalk.
But you understand what we're talking about from the revision.
I don't think it's a safety issue at all. I think it's a very limited parking lot. It's staffed in the back. Everything flows nicely. But if everybody's more comfortable with striping a pathway, we'll certainly do it.
All right, yes, thank you. All right, if there aren't any further questions...
Do we have waivers to consider as well?
Thank you.
Section 146-9, the following waivers are requested. Section A subsection 1, waivers requested from the preliminary plan to allow a one-state submission due to the overall size and scope of the project and the fact that this is a lot consolidation as opposed to submitting two plans. Makes no sense. We also are requesting under B, a partial waiver requested from the major category to allow a one-state submission, very similar to the last one that I mentioned. Section 146-11, A4, waivers requested to limit the identification of the surrounding property information within 400 feet of the subject property to the adjoining and adjacent property owners due to the limited size and scope of the project itself. Subsection 10, a waiver is requested to limit the identification of the surrounding zoning information within 400 feet, similar to the first one. Section B subsection 3, a waiver is requested to limit the identification of the surrounding property within 400 feet of the property to the adjoining and adjacent property owners due to the limited size. B7 says, it deals with utilities and makes the same request for waiver. Section 146-43, erosion and sediment control. We're requesting under C3A, waivers requested to allow the landscape in the lawn areas to be graded at a slope in excess of 15%, which is required due to the fact that the existing topography features of the site. The proposed grading is decreasing and/or maintaining the existing slopes not to exceed 25 degrees. Those are the waivers.
Thank you.
Okay, the issues, and Mark, I don't know, go ahead.
There were several others listed in the application.
I think we...
The phasing plan and the recreation facilities plan.
Yeah, give me a minute.
They're on there as well. I mean, they're standard waivers you see every month.
Okay.
The phasing plan, the applicant has listed that this is a start-to-finish operation. This won't be phased in over time. And the recreational facility plan, they're not proposing any communal open space that'll be deemed restricted, other than the small garden area they're providing out in front with the bench. So, that covered the two waivers that Mr. Growland did not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They gave me the, never mind.
I'll bill you.
I'm ready to make a motion for approval, subject to conditions, but I'm not sure if I remember them all, Mark, so I don't know if you were paying attention.
I have three that had come up. One was the, you wanted a request made to SEPTA to relocate the bus stop to the front of the small comming area. The continued pursuit of traffic comming measures on both Guernsey and Eckert Avenue. And the crosswalk be added from the rear staff parking lot to the building.
And also the verge.
Well, I think they said they were going to do that.
Oh, you are going to do, well, I would still condition it on that, right?
It's fine.
It's fine.
Was there anything?
My guess is, I mean, candidly, my guess is it's going to come up on Thursday. People are mixed on it. Well, in the meantime, we're going to try to see if we can figure something out that might be a little bit better, but I can't promise it.
Yeah, I mean, there's all, just Google it, you'll find so many different ways.
Mark, what was the third one?
Low maintenance. All right, so I made the motion with the, and granting the waivers.
All right, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time over multiple evenings. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a short recess. So, if everyone can take a break for a few minutes, and we'll be back. All right, everyone, I think we're ready to proceed with our next application. This is the application of Baderwood Residential Partners LP for the development of the 18.88-acre site known as Baderwood Shopping Center, located at 1575 and 1631 The Fairway, Jenkentown, PA, 19046. The applicant seeks conditional use approval for the development of a 244-unit apartment building on the site. This application was filed in February of 2016. It has been the subject of several zoning hearing board applications and received final approval on February 20, 2018. The revised development plan was submitted in March of 2018. The Board of Commissioners have scheduled a conditional use application hearing for Monday, November 19, 2018.
That needs to be revised.
Yes, thank you, Mark. The proposed development calls for a five-story building with structured parking. The proposed development complies with the density requirements at 12.9 units per acre. Other site improvements include additional landscaping within the existing parking, improvements along the street frontage, and new parking lot lighting. The property is owned within the Fairway Business Center District within Ward Number 7 of the Township of Abington. And we have the applicant here with us this evening to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Kaplan, on behalf of Baderwood Residential Partners. Baderwood Residential Partners is the owner of the rear eight acres of the Baderwood Shopping Center, which is, everybody knows, is a date adjacent to the fairway. The front portion of the center was developed many, many years ago as the Baderwood Shopping Center. The rear eight acres that my client owns is undeveloped, and we have been proposing for some extended period of time to develop the rear eight acres of the site with a proposed apartment building. Now, this conditional use application has a long and somewhat tortured history, but that history is important as the background to what we are presenting. Baderwood Residential Partners submitted its conditional use application to the township on February 4, 2016, when the Fairway Transit District zoning was in place. Therefore, despite the fact that the township has changed the zoning of the site, the conditional use application is grandfathered under the FTD ordinance. And the FTD ordinance represents the governing zoning regulations for this application. Now, I've handed out, or my client has handed out, a loose-sleeve binder of exhibits. This is the binder of exhibits that we presented to the Board of Commissioners. I think the date was the 19th of November, when we had our conditional use hearing. Now, based on the original conditional use application that was filed back in February of 2016, Mr. Pennical determined that in order to develop the rear eight acres of the site, certain existing legal non-conformities, pardon me, within the existing shopping center would either have to be brought into conformity with the requirements of the FTD ordinance, or we would have to obtain a variance from those requirements of the FTD ordinance. Now, we did two things in response to Mark's determination. First of all, because we believe that the existing non-conformities are protected under Pennsylvania law, we filed an appeal of Mark's determination with the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board affirmed Mark's determination, and we filed an appeal of that in the Common Pleas Court. We also filed a second application with the zoning hearing board, which, following Mark's direction in his original determination, sought variances to allow the existing non-conforming conditions to remain on the property in connection with the proposed development of the rear eight acres. Now, after having filed that application for variances to permit the continuation of all of the non-conformities, we took a look at the existing non-conformities within the shopping center to see if there was any way to bring any of those non-conformities into compliance with the FTD ordinance without jeopardizing the number of parking spaces within the shopping center, because we didn't have the authority to reduce those parking spaces as a result of the tenant leases. Now, we were able to bring some of the existing non-conforming items into compliance with the FTD ordinance. We then asked the zoning hearing board, we filed an amended application, and we then asked the zoning hearing board to grant variances to allow the existing non-conforming uses that we could, we could not modify to remain. I should say, I keep saying "non-conforming uses." They were non-conforming dimensional requirements, so I apologize for that. The zoning hearing board granted those variances, and the decision is marked as Exhibit A4 in the book. As a result of the grant of the variances, we filed the amended conditional use application that forms the basis of the application that we have here. That incorporated the variances that were granted and incorporated the changes that we had agreed to make to some of those non-conforming uses, non-conforming, non-conformities. Now, in addition to that, the township took an appeal of the approval by the zoning hearing board of our variances, because the township basically had concerns about the design of the existing accesses to the shopping center. And we sat down with township staff, Township's traffic consultant, Brian Keveney, two members of council, to discuss those concerns and to try and figure out a way to address those concerns. As a result of those discussions, we proposed to make certain modifications to the existing accesses, and those modifications are reflected in a concept plan that I will present to you in a little while. Now, I want to say that we made a number of changes along the entrances. As I've said, we don't own, we do not own the shopping center. We have a cross easement agreement with the owner of the shopping center. So, any changes that we make or propose to make within the shopping center requires the approval of the shopping center owner. We're going to show you a very significant array of changes, most of which have been signed off on by the owner of the shopping center. One of them, we have not received that approval yet, and we may have to just work that out in land development. So, as I said, we made this application and we made this presentation to the full board on the 19th of November. And we're going to try and, or we will, make a very similar presentation to you tonight. So, the first person I would like to have come up here and describe the existing conditions plan, the amended conditional use application, is Chris Denouls from Bowler Engineering, who's our civil engineer. I think what I have up there, Chris, is your existing conditions plan.
That's correct. What we have up here is the existing conditions plan. And for discussion purposes, north is really at the top of the page here. So, what we're looking at, at the bottom or the south end of the project here, is the fairway. This is the subject property, which is the Baderwood Shopping Center that I'm going around here with the mouse. This building off on the east side here is the Whole Foods. And then through here, you can see we have the existing strip retail, other components of the shopping center, the bank, out parcels up front, and then really the existing parking field. Starting from the west side, you have this existing access here, which is a right-in, right-out today. The second access we have here is full movement. So, you do have the ability for cars to come in that are traveling east on the fairway to make the left-in. Similar down to this access point here, it's full movement. Again, cars from, traveling east on the fairway can make the left-in. And then finally, you have the easternmost access here, which, again, is a full movement access. And then really, as Mark had indicated, this parcel that you see up here is the parcel in question where the residential development will happen. To the west over here is the Noble Town Center. And then to the east over here is the Riddle Park Development.
So, let's go to the amended conditional use plan, Chris. You may want to blow that up a little bit. I think you're just about there. Okay. So, would you take us... So would you take us through the changes that we proposed?
So, the original conditional use application did not propose any modifications to this front parking field, really starting from, from, we're really going through and addressing the comments from Mr. Pennacal's review letter, that the changes first included, really the big change, I guess, that we received variance on was the parking stall size. So, the existing parking stalls out there today, they range anywhere from 10 by 18 spaces to, to 10 by 16 spaces, and everyone knows that that really goes out to the shopping center. You know, the parking cadence is kind of all over the place, you know, there's, there's no real defined traffic movements and traffic patterns through the parking field. So as part of the changes initially, or really the first change was the pedestrian circulation and connectivity through development. Today, there really is none, none out there. So starting from, from west, again, the westernmost access, you can see sidewalk that was extended through, along with crosswalks that take you along really all the way through and up to the residential component. There's also modifications to this rear parking field here, again with some sidewalk and crosswalks to this sidewalk portion. There's also sidewalk, or, I'm sorry, crosswalks between these two buildings. And as you move over to the next access point, again, sidewalk from the fairway to the bank pad, and then additional sidewalks and crosswalks, really to the strip retail component, which is really, this is the Panera Bread located on this end cap here. Moving further down, really, through the parking lot itself, one of the requirements, as far as the ordinance is concerned, is 10% landscaping, and then 20% coverage from those trees within that parking field. So, really, this is probably the most significant improvement in the parking lot, is that you now have, what you can see here are really landscaped islands or end caps at the end of each one of these parking trees. So now you're really helping develop or establish a defined traffic movement pattern through the shopping center. And you can see all these islands through here, there's some that are at the end caps, there's some additional ones that are longitudinal through here, and really, they're, they're spread out through the entire area here to get us to that 10% landscaping as well as the 20% coverage. Some of the other changes that were proposed were related to finish, parking benches, trash receptacles, planters. So, as far as the code is concerned, they've been placed along the fairway, as well as along the frontage of the retail buildings, and they also extend up the main access drive up to the residential component.
So do me a favor. Everybody's looking at this, this parking lot, just for a second, go back to the existing conditions plan so people can appreciate the difference, the significant difference that this will make in the, in the whole parking scheme of the entire center.
Again, here, here's the existing conditions plan. Really no landscaped islands anywhere throughout the parking lot. And again, traffic patterns, if you've been out here, again, cars, you know, have the ability to really traverse the parking lot, kind of wherever they want. There's nothing prohibiting them from doing that.
Okay, so let's go back, let's go back to the amended conditional use plan. I, I think you should, maybe you should blow up the development in the back and explain the development of the apartments.
the main access to the residential component is from the westernmost access along the fairway. So cars would enter, come to this stop sign, you have the crosswalk here, and then they would make the turn and make their way up the driveway here behind the existing strip retail, and up to this rear property line. At this point is really where the grade starts to pick up. So, at this point, you're really ramping up to go up the hill at probably a 14% grade or so, to get you up to the top here. And then as you get to the top of the, the hill, so to speak, to the left here, you have a public open space area, and then you have an access into the structured parking or underground component. Then as you continue to move westward here, I really have the main access into the building, and then another access point here into the first level of the parking structure. As you make the turnaround, this driveway here, you, you continue to extend up the hill, and at this point, portions of the building are starting to more or less become buried because of the grade. And then what you see here is really the amenity space associated with the residential building.
And our architect is here, and we have renderings of the buildings, so I'm going to ask that we hold off on describing the building except for the site improvements that Chris is talking about.
Then, as you extend or continue further up this driveway, here is another access point into the, what would be the second level garage. And then as you continue back here, this is a trash enclosure, and then just additional access along the backside of the building, really more for emergency vehicle access.
So that's about it, isn't it?
That's it.
Okay. So that's the plan that we ended up with at the zoning hearing board, when we asked for the variances, and we made the changes to satisfy Mark's original objection to our original conditional use plan. At that point, the township appealed our, our variances for the conditional use, and I won't belabor it again, but we had significant amount of professional contact between our traffic engineer, Matt Hammond, who I'm going to bring up here now, and Brian Keveney from Pinoni, who was or is the township's traffic consultant with regard to this development. Rather than me telling it secondhand, let's start with you, Matt, discussing the, the discussions that you had and the materials that you had to deal with.
Sure. Again, good evening, Matt Hammond with Traffic Plan and Design. As Mark has mentioned, one of the township's original concerns revolved, related to the existing access serving the Baderwood Shopping Center. And what we did was to coordinate with township staff and Mr. Keveney.
You want the concept plan?
This one's okay for now.
Okay.
To coordinate with Mr. Keveney and township staff to kind of find out the genesis of the concerns, what main issues were, were being found along the fairway, and what things we may or may not be able to do moving forward. Mr. Keveney had mentioned there were a number of suggestions in the past. I believe the township's been looking at this section of the township in the fairway for at least 10 years now, to look at mainly pedestrian enhancements. It was also brought to our attention that this stretch of the fairway, not necessarily attributed to the shopping center, but this stretch of the fairway experienced a high number of crashes, vehicle crashes, as there are multiple points of access serving various properties up and down the fairway. So, we came up with a concept plan of some changes that we thought that would help alleviate some of the township's concerns, and, and the first plan that we came up with really revolved around signalizing the westernmost access. As, as was stated earlier, the existing access, the westernmost access is a right-in, right-out by virtue of the median in the fairway. So we looked at signalizing this access point, allowing all movements, turns in, right-left turns in, right turns in, left turns in, left turns out, and the benefit also would serve the existing car dealership across the street, which also has an access point in this location. It would help to serve the shopping center as well as the proposed apartment complex to the rear. We'd also looked at making changes to the driveways along the fairway, right-in, right-out, and the, the easternmost driveway, remaining, this, this driveway here remaining full access, and then this driveway, which we refer to as the west central driveway, being a right-in, right-out with a left-in, so that the car dealer to the south was not negatively affected by what we were proposing. We also, at that time, prepared a traffic impact study and submitted that to Mr. Keveney for his review. As a result of his review, we received an email back in July, I believe it was, outlining some concerns that Mr. Keveney and the township staff had raised with respect to that concept, and he wanted really us to look at it and see if we could refine some things. Mr. Keveney had asked about the possibility of, instead of having a signal here, placing a signal in this location here, the west central driveway, to, to better serve the shopping center. He had also asked about the potential of increasing the length of the throat of this driveway. As this amended conditional plan, use plan shows, there's internal drive aisles that connect into this driveway, that he would like us to look at to see if we could eliminate those, to create a longer throat at that driveway. There are also two existing, and I'm pointing to their locations, what we call mid-block crosswalks. There's two crosswalks along the fairway in this area that are basically unregulated, and what I mean by that is they're not part of a traffic signal, there's no flashing beacons out there. Mr. Keveney had looked, asked us to look at the possibility of providing flashing beacons to improve pedestrian safety through that area. And then a couple other little minor details. So based on that, we went through and revised... Where's the plan?
Chris.
Chris, where'd the rest of the plans go?
What do you need, Matt?
The rest of the plans.
There, I had them up here. Give me one sec. Not sure where they disappeared.
At the bottom, right here. Right there.
You want the concept plan?
The final.
Here's the concept plan.
So, what this plan shows is the revised concept based on the coordination that occurred with the township traffic engineer in, in, I'll say, late summer. The changes that were made, instead of relocating the traffic signal from the westernmost driveway to the, what I'll, again, the west central driveway, we continued to provide for a traffic signal in this location, but then also are now proposing a second traffic signal at the eastern central driveway that will serve what I'll call the Whole Foods area of the shopping center. So essentially, instead of just the one traffic signal on the western side, we now have two traffic signals that would serve the proposed property. We also, as requested by Mr. Keveney, cleaned up this area and created a longer throat, and you'll notice, based on the last plan, that all of the internal connections from the parking areas no longer access that driveway. So essentially, we have a straight driveway, long driveway that comes up into the center and creates what we'll call a T intersection, or a, or four-way intersection in this area to provide for better traffic flow. We also, again, as you'll see, continue to maintain this right-in, right-out driveway here, adding in a median and allowing the left into the car dealership, and then a right-in, right-out driveway on the eastern side by closing the existing median off. We did not want to look at possibly or potentially putting a traffic signal at the western side, or I'm sorry, the eastern side of the site, because of its proximity to the residential development adjacent to the property. By doing this, by providing this second signal, we've actually killed two birds with one stone. And what I mean by that is we have allowed for that second signal to help alleviate some of the traffic associated with the shopping center, but we were also able to eliminate the mid-block crossings along the fairway here and bring those crossings to a signalized intersection, which will have all of the latest pedestrian equipment, hand-man countdown timers, crosswalks at a traffic signal, which is a much safer situation than having them mid-block, or even having them mid-block with, with just flashing beacons. We also, I believe, provided for pedestrian accommodations along the entire frontage, ADA ramps at all of our driveways, and then obviously, those would all connect into the pedestrian circulation system that was described by Mr. Denouls.
Let me just interrupt for one minute before we go much farther. So in what Matt is calling the west central entrance, if you recall from the existing plan, that's a, I believe that's a full access intersection there.
That is correct.
And there is only one half of those parking spaces in existence now, so that there is basically a straight shot back to Panera.
Yeah, exactly. So... Wide open area here.
So, with regard to the owner of the shopping center, they're okay with the way we have reconfigured the west access, and we'll install light, they're okay with closing off, making the eastern right-in, right-out only, they're okay with the second signalized intersection. We need more time with them, they're used to that intersection that Matt is showing as probably the main access intersection to the shopping center. Now, we believe, Matt said that by taking the two on the, on the west and the east, and making them full access intersections with a traffic signal, it's going to be much easier to get in and out of the center from the two signalized intersections, and we believe that the dependence on that west central as the quote "main entrance" will not be required. But as it stands right now, we do not have permission yet to close off just where Matt, that, that median. So we're going to continue to work with, or try to work with, the landlord, but the landlord has the final say. Having said that, I think it's fair to say that even without that, even without that change, there are significant access improvements and safety improvements because of the lights and the control of the entire parking lot, the way Chris and Matt have described.
That's correct, and I think the key to all that is the fact that it's not necessarily these improvements or these changes that we're making to the access point serving the center, not necessarily to help people get in and out of the center easier, it's really to address the township's biggest concern, which was the safety of not only vehicles, but more so the pedestrians along the fairway through this area. And one other thing that I did not mention that would occur as part of this plan, is that the two traffic signals that we're proposing would be coordinated, work with one another as well as the intersection of 611 and the fairway. So you would have the ability to progress traffic through that area in a safe and efficient manner. So we revised the concept plan, we also prepared a revised traffic impact study outlining the changes that you see on this concept plan, and we submitted that to Mr. Keveney in early September for his review. We then had a meeting with Mr. Keveney and township staff on September 20th to discuss that submission, and again, I don't want to put words in Mr. Keveney's mouth, but I believe at that, at that meeting, that we had addressed pretty much everything that we could address along the fairway, along the frontage, as are related to the township's original concerns with respect to traffic flow and safety.
So where we stand right now, the application that was before the Board of Commissioners on the 19th was our amended conditional use plan, along with the demonstration that Matt just went through, and what we have said to the Board of Commissioners is that in order to resolve the controversy, we are proposing that the board... we are proposing that the board approve our amended conditional use plan and that as a condition, we would agree to the changes that Matt has just laid out, albeit without committing at this point to changing the, what you've called the West Central access.
Correct.
I think that's it?
That is correct.
Okay. Chuck?
Mr. Kaplan, sorry, before you move forward, does that plan that you refer to, does that have a date?
Huh, good question.
Well, if it adds up being a condition, we'd like the condition to a plan dated X.
Oh, yeah. I think we... So what is this? This is overall site plan revision number two.
Chris, do we...
Chris, oh, yeah, good, Chuck.
There is a date on the one I have, I guess it's too small, under revisions...
No, we just blew it up.
November 13th, 2018, last revised.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got it, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Chuck, you want to hook up your architectural drawings here? So first of all, tell them who you are.
Yes, my name is Charles Chappell. I'm an architect with Minnewask Architects out of Lambertville, New Jersey. What I'll be presenting here is, brief enough, is how actually the building really works. As you can see here, much like was talked about earlier, you're actually looking at two levels of parking with five levels of residential above. You have direct access into the parking levels along the main entrance here. As you kind of, as you drive up along the side of the building, you have internal access to the second level here, as well as a ramp internally in the garage. As you can see, the first floor of residential, which is actually the third level of the building itself, is where we actually have the amenities and the start of the residential. So as you come out of your elevators, as you enter here, you kind of look directly from the amenity space onto this open amenity space, which actually opens approximately southwest, you actually get good exposure along this edge for good sun exposure for the amenities along that level. Now, the residential floors above actually follow the same perimeter. It's a double-loaded corridor with several elevators that direct access to the garage below. It works very clean in the sense like that, so it's all, all works in conjunction with the garage below, and it's considered a podium concept scheme. So what I have here now is a building, and we'll discuss a little bit of the conceptual architecture. So what you can see here is the southeast and northeast elevations facing the Betawood Shopping Plaza. You can see we used a variety of materials here. We're using approximately 50% decorative masonry, well with us fiber cement panel. Now, we're using a variety of four colors of fiber cement and four colors of masonry using various sizes and textures. We used the simple architecture with regards to bays, elongated bays, balconets, and balconies to kind of create this architecture style goes around. Now, we've continued this whole style around all the sides of the building. Here is the elevations that's facing the Noble Shopping Center, and you begin to see how, again, how we still continue with using those simple elements and created this architectural style to go around the entire building. Now, again, you begin to see how the building kind of climbs up the site, and this is the garage that exposed, but again, even the garage itself has the masonry feel, so we didn't cut short on any of the materials around the building in general. So this is my final perspective. This is, you're looking at it from Noble Circle. So again, you begin to see how we use the materials, all the decorative masonry, the fiber cement board, and again, the architectural bays, balconets, so on and so forth to articulate the building facades. So again, the architecture is consistent around the perimeter of the building, so...
Chuck, go back to where the amenity space is. I think people that are looking at it for the first time need to understand how you constructed or proposed to construct this podium building and integrate the amenity space into the building.
Again, if I go back to, this is actually where we can see, so this, you're actually looking at the second level of parking, and the first level of parking is actually embedded into the, embedded into grade. So again, these are the five levels of residential above, and this is actually where you really begin to activate the amenity space. Along this edge in here is where you actually have your fitness, your club room, and that actually spills out into this amenitized deck where you actually have the pool, you'll have grilling stations, you'll have a variety of outdoor living spaces, that's really what's intended to happen along this space here. And again, what this does, the angle, it actually offers a lot of sunlight in here, so it really becomes like a private oasis for the residents of the building.
So I want to go back and emphasize something. This sounds like a land development application with the amount of detail that we presented, but I would like everybody to understand that this is a conditional use application. Theoretically, it's just about use, but in order to satisfy the requirements, you have to demonstrate that you can comply with all the area and bulk and certain other requirements, hence the amount of detail that we've shown. But assuming that the conditional use plan is approved by the Board of Commissioners, we will be back with much more detailed site development plans, at which time we can get into more detail. So that's our presentation. If there are any questions, we'll try and, we'll try and deal with them.
Thank you. I have some questions going back to the traffic and the parking lot structures, if we could go back to that slide for a minute.
Sure. Let me put this back. So you want the concept plan, I believe. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can blow this up with it out.
You messed it up.
Did I? I wouldn't be surprised. Fire away.
So the first question I have is going back down to the main parking lot, there's a cut-through that goes through to the parking lot that goes to the PetSmart and the gym and so forth. Is that going to remain open? And I, it's hard to tell from here, did you put a...
You mean to Noble Plaza?
Yes.
Yes. It will remain open, as I'm pointing to right here.
And are you putting a pedestrian crosswalk or something? It's difficult to tell from here.
So there will be pedestrian crosswalks in this area on all but one of the legs. You have a crosswalk here, this is the Noble Town Center connection.
So that'll basically remain the same?
That will remain the same. You'll have a crosswalk here, you'll have a crosswalk across this parking field, crosswalk across the main driveway, and a crosswalk across this internal driveway as well.
Okay. And then going up, if you could pull the drawing down there and then over to the left, are you having another access over? Again, I can't read what that is.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me explain that.
Thank you.
So you're now at the second level of the garage when you get to that point there. The design has been created so that our road, when we get up there, would be congruent or on the same level as the parking lot in Noble Square. We have had, we've had many discussions over the years with the owner of the shopping When Larry Mateo was here, he had a number of discussions with the owner of the shopping center. We want a simple emergency access so that in the worst of worst of emergencies, there would be a second access. We can't force the owner of the shopping center to do that. We believe that sooner or later, based on the discussions that we've had with that owner, they're going to be in the township for some kind of application for something. And we hope to be able to, with the township's help, negotiate a simple breakaway chain there so that if it's, God forbid, ever needed, it will be available.
And just to be clear, I'm sorry, it is proposed emergency access only, so it wouldn't be in the future for residents of the apartment complex to be able to enter and exit from there, it'd only be for emergency access purposes.
Would there be pedestrian access there?
No.
No, ma'am.
Interesting. And would you have any other emergency exits for fire trucks and so forth, maybe going into the development at the top of the hill that is not developed yet? No.
You'll see, and maybe you could scroll down just slightly, I'm a little bit out of my realm of expertise, but you'll notice in this area here, these lines, these are retaining walls, because if you remember, the property slopes up, you're kind of building into the wall.
Yeah, there's a significant grade bust behind the building here. So these walls here, they're tiered, but they're about 10 feet each, and then really the grade just continues all the way up to the back property line, probably about another 30 feet or so. So really is no feasible access that can be made along that back property line.
And how about the other side down towards that, the curved area of the road coming up?
So down here, we're sort of in the same situation where you have a retaining wall along this entire end. So the retaining wall, essentially the driveway sits high to the existing grade over here, and then you get to a point where it kind of switches over where the driveway is on the high side, and then over here is on the low side. So really is no, no feasible connection that can be made along that side either.
Okay, thank you. I think some of the, many of the recommendations or the changes you've made to the parking are going to be a big improvement. The end caps, for instance, will help organize that traffic. Everyone's always making their own parking spaces there, particularly this time of year, so that'll be helpful. And the lights, I think, will help prevent a lot of what I see are fender benders happening there. Are there any comments from planning commission members on what we've heard?
Are you, I know you're not here to talk about this tonight, but I'm hoping those signals will be interconnected.
So as I mentioned, yes. So we will be working with, now, traffic signals are, even though this is a township-owned roadway, all traffic signals must be permitted through the PennDOT process. They're basically the clearinghouse. So it would be my intention, as part of that application to PennDOT, for the conclusion of those two traffic signals, to have those two traffic signals coordinated with the traffic signal at 611 and the fairway as well. So all three of those signals...
I think it's pretty clear that that would happen.
Yeah, at a minimum, it's the two in the frontage.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that one. That's going to be very difficult for you to do with the traffic volumes up there, but these two in particular, for somebody who's coming up the fairway, who sits at the red light, light turns green, and the next one turns red.
Without a doubt, absolutely.
It's going to be next to impossible for you to coordinate at the other spot.
Well, I think, based on the proximity, the location of that signal, it's something that PennDOT's going to ask us to look at. We actually, one of the recommendations that we made in our traffic study was to look at optimizing the timing of the signal at 611 in the fairway. But at a bare minimum, I agree with you, absolutely, we will coordinate those two traffic signals.
Do you think, piggybacking on Lucy's question, so I get the emergency chain into the parking lot, but when people move in here, there's going to be a desired walk-through to Steinmark? Do you think that might happen? Is that something you're going to, like, is there going to be, are there going to be walls or fences along that edge?
Look, we, I, go ahead, Chris. We don't have any right...
I know you don't. I'm just asking, is there a geographical bus that that, or, you know, is there a bus at that location that would preclude that? This kind of came up when we were looking at the Penn State dorms. I asked a similar question about the adjacent property, and it was very clear that there was retaining wall that, because we were worried about cut-through into Huntington at the time.
I'm going to let the guy who knows more about it than I do answer it.
And again, I'm probably getting ahead of the thing.
So there is, there is a retaining wall that extends along this end here. You know, there, obviously, we've located this so that you can make the connection, but in order to make that connection, there's still some other work that really needs to happen on the other properties. If you know what's happening over here, you know it's sort of tiered parking all the way up, so in order to get an actual connection across here, you have to do some regrading, and then there's really, what happens is this retaining wall here winds up bending, you know, and extending onto this property to essentially pick up the grade to get that access across. But, you know, as far as elevation is concerned, the elevation here on our property lines up with the elevation that's actually in the driveway and the parking area on the opposite side.
Okay.
I have a quick question on the, on the weird, I'm sorry, I call it weird, but on coming down the hill and then making that left and then going through that throat to exit onto the fairway, is there any issue with sightlines? Because the build, the existing building is really close to that intersection, and I'm worried that you won't be able to maybe see cars turning.
So that'll be something that obviously we'll look at during land development. I can tell you that the configuration here and maybe the, you'll notice on the existing conditions plan, it's virtually identical with the light, the layout. You have this connection over here from Noble Town Center, you have this driveway that comes back that feeds this rear parking area. You have this drive aisle coming through, and then you have this driveway coming up. The only difference between the two is this is kind of a hodgepodge, there's a lot of different activity going on, there's no definition with respect to the drive aisles, whereas here, we're proposing stop control. And yes, we will look to make sure that if someone pulls up here, have the ability to someone to see this way, but that would be really the main concern, is someone coming this way to see ahead, truly this one looking down that way. But that's something that we will look at and to ensure it occurs.
And I assume that a fire truck can make all these turns and get around everywhere?
That's correct. We did look at truck turn, both truck and emergency vehicle, fire truck movements, and a truck can make its way all the way up, and that's kind of why you see this, this path here. So a truck would come up, and they have to do a three-point turn to get back down, but there are, we did look at those movements, and you can get all the way around those sides of the building.
So how does one get the backside covered?
This side here?
Yeah.
There would be no vehicular access on this side of the building.
But for a fire truck? I mean, I, honestly, I don't know what, what the fire marshal wants for that, but that's not required to have...
There were some initial conversations going back...
Not about that. It was, how do we get the second access? But there was no, excuse me, there was no complaint that I know of with regard to having access on three sides of the building and being able to, to have, first of all, this is going to be a sprinkler building.
Right.
And you're going to have stacking, you'll have internal water supply. So yes, you'll be able to get the three sides, you will not be able to get to the other side, but there will be the facilities for a fire to be contained.
I mean, it might be worth the double-check, just make sure you don't need that, because I know a lot of townships require full access around.
Well, that's going to be part of land development. Right now, we're in, we're theoretically in use.
I think I have, like, three minor things that I want to clarify. The second easternmost signal down at the bottom of the shopping center on the fairways, are you concerned or is our traffic engineer concerned about there not being a neck or a throat or whatever you want to call at that, coming out of the shopping center?
So yes, and that's a good observation. There was initial discussion with respect to, could we potentially do the same thing to this drive aisle as we did to this drive aisle here to increase the stacking area? Unfortunately, and Mark may be able to...
That's controlled, that's controlled by Whole Foods. Whole Foods has control over their parking lot, and we did not, we do not have permission to make any further changes to Whole Foods' parking lot.
Because that would require the loss of parking in that area if you were going to create that longer throat, because you would essentially eliminate the parking spaces here. As Mark stated, we don't have the ability to make any modifications on the Whole Foods project. But we did, again, have this discussion with Mr. Keveney and talk about the fact that we were very limited in what we could do outside of basically the fairway in this area, and he seemed to be satisfied based on our explanation. And he seemed to be satisfied based on our explanation.
Yeah, I, I'm just a little concerned if you can't have, like, some stacking there. If that light's going to do any good, it's just going to be a free-for-all still. And, you know, everybody's going to be queued up, different ways to get out there, or just go down to the other light. Or go out one of the other ones. So I, I'm not sure, but again, I did read your traffic impact study.
Wait a minute. Here's the existing plan.
Yes, I know.
Chris, there is a change. We've introduced, haven't we introduced some islands? What did I do? We've introduced some controls in the, in the Whole Foods parking lot.
That's correct. There's, there's no loss of parking in the Whole Foods, but with the ability.
But there's defined islands now. I see that.
Right, with the ability to go to smaller stalls that allow us to at least get some striped areas at the end caps.
Okay, well, regard, okay, that was just one concern. A second one was, you said this, the, the internal driveway to the apartments was 14% grade? To go up the, to the apartments?
For, for a portion of the stretches, yes.
Okay, is that the highest, or is that pretty much the whole?
That, that's the highest. I think, generally speaking, as you get through the rest of this area here, it levels out to like an 8% or so.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty steep. And did, I'm sorry, I know you already said this, but the owner, where the cars are parked for the emergency accessway, did you talk to them, did you say?
I did.
And they said no, or? Because I think that's really important for something so big, to have another access.
We spent a lot of time with this, and Larry and, and Mark spent time with it. They're a big national REIT. Have they just been sold, Fred? Not yet. So we had a number of discussions with them. My understanding is that they came into the township and talked about the possibility of doing some more improvements. And we went back to them, and we couldn't, we couldn't get their attention.
Because I think that's really key. I don't know, to have that second emergent, you know, access up to the apartments, given the slope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the planning commission?
Yeah, in regards to units, size, bedroom type, one, two, demographics?
We have not, we're working, putting together a market study?
We already have a market study.
And this is Fred Snow with Brandalini.
So, good question. Usually that, obviously, we've done some, our own initial projections, or we wouldn't be here. A lot of that isn't finalized till later, when we actually do the plans and see how they fit. But for the most part, I would suggest we would probably be in the range of about 950 square foot on average, between one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Kind of contemplating whether there's a market here for some three bedrooms, I'm not sure yet. But my guess is it'll be mostly one bedroom and two bedroom. And, you know, like I said, the one bedrooms will be a little bit smaller, some of the two bedrooms will be a little bit bigger. Is there a second part to your question? I forget.
Ah, demographics.
Oh, demographics? It's interesting. It's, it's, it's going to be a mix compared to what our experience is. Obviously, with the train station, we expect some transit-oriented type demographics, which would be younger-driven, that want to work in the city. But we also think there's a demographic here for a move-down buyer, you know, that don't want to leave the area. So I don't, it's not going to be one size fits all. We built a similar project without a train station down in Concord Township in Delaware County. And our average age there is about 42 of our demographics. I probably would have thought it would have been younger when we started, but that's what it turned out to be. So it's going to be a market-open project, you know, we're not going to turn anybody down. First of, we suspect that the people that want to ride the train are going to be with the Whole Foods, the Trader Joe's. It's really going to attract that type of commuter. And it'll also attract the, like I said, the move-down person that doesn't want to leave the area.
Last question, inside the unit itself, no ancillary or accessory uses?
No.
Open to the public?
No. The only thing I would say is, and we didn't really get into the density in terms of bonus points, but in your, in the FTD ordinance, there's a provision for bonus points to get the density that we're providing. And one of those items that we have to provide for bonus points is, under the, in the parking garage, 15% of our parking spaces have to be open to the public. So they're not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's answering what you, your question was intending, but just wanted to make sure that was clear. And there were some other bonus points, and I'll just go through. We need eight bonus points, based on the FTD ordinance, to get where we're, we're at. We get one bonus point for gazebo, public art, stuff like that. We get three bonus points for the parking garage with the public parking. We get three bonus points for recycled rainwater, that's what we're proposing on the architecture. There's also three bonus points available for the traffic improvements we're proposing. So there's a combination of bonus points that we're going to have that, as long as we total eight, we meet the obligation within the zoning. So, just wanted to make sure you were clear on that, sorry.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else on the commission?
If I could ask about, just one thing about the open space. Could you describe what's proposed for the open space that's indicated on your plans and how they're meant to be accessible to the public?
Well, I don't, go ahead, Chris.
Really, that level of detail of the open space hasn't been fully flushed out yet. That will happen really as part of the land development process. You know, really, this conditional use plan is really just identifying where those open space areas are. So up top here, approximately 15,000 square feet. And then you see this, this area here, as well as over here, roughly 3,500 square feet each. There's, there's very specific requirements in the FTD that speak to amount of paving, pavers, plantings, and all that stuff that goes in there. Those components would be identified on the land development plans.
But seemingly, the intent is for them to be accessible and not just sort of step back in the.
That's correct.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application tonight? Please step forward. And if you could tell us your name and speak into the microphone, thank you.
Sure. Herb McMahon, 1046 Huntington Road. Basically, my observation here is Ward Seven is under siege. We have a BET project that you're going to hear next. We have this project. If you look just to the north, you have the Riddle Waters development. That's all these homes. They go clear on back and around, and they come up around this way. And you have the Penn State dorms. Any traffic studies that have been done don't necessarily include all that traffic that is going to come from the BET and Riddle Waters that is still in development. So my point is, it just seems as though there is such incredible development here in Ward Seven, and it's all very condensed. The, the Penn State dorms are right above, right about where the ceiling meets the wall here. So they're not far, far north above the Riddle Waters project. Another point I wanted to make was just the single ingress egress. I think you've got to hope that when there's a fire, that there's not snow or ice with a 14% grade here. And I think your observations on the, the emergency access is right on target. And I can't believe with, with where we are in society and where we are with safety, that there is absolutely no access to this area back here. And I think if they shrunk the building down, they might be able to accommodate some space for emergency vehicles. I think right now, what you're looking at is possibly bringing some hook and ladders in here and squirting over these homes and hopefully hitting the building. I just, I, I can't even imagine. And if this sprinkler system fails or something like that, I, I think it's just amazing. The other thing I want to do is come down here and talk about traffic. Basically, from what I understand, I'm going to ask Matt, what is the number of counts of queues that you have with cars coming in? Yes?
This is not a question and answer period.
Okay. At the last meeting we have with the commissioners, I think the queue number was like, something like nine. So you have nine cars waiting to pull in. And I think the queue number is something that you all should, when I sit down, maybe ask Matt, because I can't ask him, and, and ask about that study. Because if you have nine cars in the queue, that's pretty amazing. And from what I understand, the intersection of Susquehanna and Riddle, Riddle Road was not studied in their traffic study. And I think that is vitally important, because that's another very congested intersection at this location. And I think that's, I think that's it. I think the major concern I have out of all this is probably public safety. And I also worry about the, the actual, the actual shopping center. I think that the development will probably take more than two years to construct. All of the construction vehicles will enter in here and travel up here. And that's every single day, heavy construction equipment for two years straight, possibly even two and a half years. And I, I just fear for the shops along here. If I owned Panera's or if I was a franchisee, I would have major concerns. I think the other concern would probably be stormwater runoff. I mean, with these grade, grades that you have, if you know that the topography of this land, I think water running downhill is hugely important. I was at Whole Foods, I guess it was maybe two weeks ago after a heavy rainfall, and there was a foot of rain. I actually took pictures of it, and you may see it when we come to BET. But warm, water runoff is a huge concern in my mind. And that's basically all I have, but I would appreciate you taking a look at this in terms of public safety. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
Kaki Evans from Lindsay Lane. Is any of this on the township's website? I did a look just now, sitting here for Brandalini or Baderwood Residential Partners. I didn't see any of these plans, but perhaps our environmental advisory council would like to take a look at this. I know they're going to use, I believe, existing parking. And I saw about the green aspects, but Montgomery County Planning Commission put out a couple of years ago a green, sustainable parking lot, so I'd like to see if some of that could be incorporated. I'm interested in the lighting also in the parking lot, to, you know, to see. I think we had some discussion just now, maybe about density and, or bonuses perhaps in the FTD districts. So is there a way that our environmental council would be able to do our role and advise on some of this?
Yes, I believe this information will be available on the website.
Okay, it will be.
And you can certainly send a letter, as you did for the upcoming application tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kaki.
And Kaki, one thing, this is for conditional use only.
I figured that.
Yes, it'll be back.
So when it gets for land development, if it gets to land development.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, you know, I think.
I understand, yeah. I just wanted to clarify.
Plans want to be, you know, we might be able to help or raise some questions if you are.
We would appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Amanda Detweiler, 1116 Penmore Place. Wondering what time the coffee arrives for everyone as we go into the evening.
Whenever you order.
I will, I'll go do that now. The, I just wanted to reiterate, I think that looking at the light at Susquehanna is important. If we're going to have four lights, if they back up, there's going to be, there's already traffic problems there. I'd be curious if, since Riddle Waters is adding open space and walking trails, if there's any concern about linking the apartments, people, if there's walking trails, people are going to use them. I don't know if there's any back way to get from Brandalini to Riddle Waters, whether, I know it's not meant to be, but like with the.
No, the, the, the topography.
Yeah. People roll down hills. I was curious where the expectation was for commuters to cross over to Noble Train Station. If their expectation is they would go down the fairway to one of the lights or perhaps up to 611 and crossing at the top at CVS, which isn't the, the best walkable intersection. Or if they'll have to cut through the parking lot behind Jules. And if there'll be an impact study to Highland School for the effect of the apartments. And finally, if between the bonus densities being proposed by Brandalini and BET, if there's like going to be a new committee that monitors such things, artwork and facades of buildings. Thanks.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Do we have an end time to the meeting tonight? Is there a cutoff time?
That's a very good question. Yes, we would not, we would like to conclude long before midnight.
So midnight is not really a.
That's only two hours from now.
Yeah, but that's, that's a time where people have to get up early in the morning to go.
As does everyone on the planning commission. So I, I do ask that everybody speaks succinctly and briefly. And if you've heard the same thing said 10 times, certainly you can say, I agree with everything that was just said, would probably suffice. But please proceed.
So rather than that, I'd rather see an 11 o'clock or earlier cutoff time.
As would I, as would I.
So who's in charge of doing that, if you would like to see? So you're in charge of doing that, and you would like to see an 11 o'clock cutoff?
Mm-hmm.
So what part of this am I not getting?
We need to speak to what you would like to say now.
I vote with you for the 11 o'clock cutoff. Okay, so the, the first thing is, and it was mentioned here, finding documents. We just got, after 12 years of asking, a single page with all the links, or most of the links, not quite all of them, for the BET project. This project, more than any other so far in the township, has needed that, with the multiple lawsuits and years and years and years, decades, I guess we could say almost. So I would like to hope that you all would advocate with us for one page for every project that comes. That's not a simple one, one-and-done project that comes before you. One of the things I would like to see is not shared parking for people up there, but to have shared space, that every new building, BET, this building, every new building, has a space to share for the community. At one point, the Giant down in Willow Grove had rooms for the community, and they were, they were quite well-used. But then at some point, they started saying, well, we can't, we can't do anything at night, we don't have somebody to close up. So these rooms for community meetings are needed. And I would like to see, if you're giving bonuses, that that be a bonus that you give. The, the other thing is, I, I am concerned, everybody needs to be part of our environment. So I'm not sure how one person is required to have so-and-so much green space and trees and everything else on their property, while somebody else is allowed to pretty much use every inch of their property and not be part of that solution. I'm not sure what makes Mr. Brandalini special, and I am not. So in my township, I would like to think we're all pulling our weight on the environment. And this project on the steep slope especially, that would have been once eight houses, and, and now is pretty much every inch, I find it offensive, so I'll just say that. I also terribly much agree with Mr. McMahon that this is, I don't, I don't understand how we don't have a law, a code somewhere, that doesn't allow a whole side of, of a giant complex to be inaccessible by fire truck. So how do we get that law? Somehow, we need to do that together. I, I think there must be something in the code somewhere that doesn't allow that. And if, if it is allowed, then our code needs some fixing. And so the, the last thing I'd like to say, and I agree with him on the flooding too, and the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd also like us to be a community that when a resident asks a question, that whoever is here presenting is encouraged to answer that question, whether they are required to by law or not, that we are a community that answers questions for the residents. Thank you. we are a community that answers questions for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else interested in addressing this?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's Herb McMahon, 1046 Huntington Road. I have concerns that it's 10 o'clock, and the one thing that was most concerning to me was BET, and I don't want to rush through that. If we can't get to that, and we don't have the time for that, what's the plan?
I'm hoping we will have time for that tonight, so I don't have an alternate plan right now.
Okay. And then the other one thing I noticed on my notes that I didn't say before is how large this project is. For people who don't know, 244 apartments with 491 parking spots. So almost 500 parking spots, and one ingress, egress, and the fairway, if you're familiar with that. Just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Before I make a motion, or before somebody else does, I just wanted to ask Mr. Kaplan. According to our zoning ordinance for conditional use, page 122, I just wanted to ask if the artificial light shall be directed away from adjacent properties, has that been looked at per the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And public sewer?
Yes.
Public water?
Yes.
Okay. Trash containers, I think you did mention. Let's see, what else? Noise? Possible noise. Well, it says that you're supposed to address nuisance and safety analysis, that you shall not create excessive noise, noxious odors, air pollution, or lighting, or result in pedestrian conflict or other safety hazards to people or property. So I just wanted to make sure that you're meeting our list.
This is a permitted use.
I understand that.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Don't cut me off. I won't cut you off. This is a permitted use. This is not an obnoxious use. This is a residential use in this area. I can't contemplate what it is that you're specifically worried about.
I am not worried. I'm making sure, Mr. Kaplan, that the applicant that you're representing is following our conditional use regulations and what this planning commission is supposed to be looking at, per the zoning ordinance. No, 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 please. So that's why I just want to make sure sewer, water, I'm just going down the list. It's not a big deal.
This has been, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a wise guy, but this has been reviewed and reviewed.
First time by us, okay?
Yes, but this was reviewed by the zoning officer for compliance. This project has been looked at over and over and...
Not the conditional use.
Excuse me. Yes, it has been.
Well, it is being right now. Correct? Or you don't have to answer that. Okay.
No, I'll be glad to answer it if you'll let me finish my answer.
I listened to you a long time. I think I'm done. For our solicitor, what do we need to do before we make a motion to approve, not approve, the conditional use only, correct? We don't have to look at any land development, any...
All that you have in front of you this evening is a conditional use application, which will be in front of the Board of Commissioners at their January meeting. It was originally scheduled for this coming Thursday, but it's been pushed to January. So the only thing before the planning commission this evening is the conditional use application, and you're either voting to recommend that, not recommend it, or send it along without a recommendation. The land development will be back at a later time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a recommendation that the conditional use be denied based on there not being a secondary access provided for vehicles. Is there a second?
Before we vote on that, maybe an alternate recommendation, to not make a recommendation at all. Due to the first time that we've seen this, due to the history involved, it's going to come back for, assuming it gets approved, it's going to come back for land development anyhow. And I think most of our issues, our involvement, are going to be on those issues. And a lot of things that were spoken to by the public tonight are going to be on those issues as well.
Okay, based on that, can I withdraw my motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay, it's withdrawn. Thank you.
All right. So you're making a motion?
Not to make a recommendation at all.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I think we shouldn't be making a recommendation of some kind.
Okay, so one opposed.
So by my count, the motion was to pass this along without a recommendation, and that was approved five to one.
Well, I voted no. Did you vote yes?
Four to two then.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure what you voted, Dale.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Kathy, you seconded Glenn's motion.
Yeah, but do you have to vote for it if you second it?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay.
Nope.
I just wanted it to get voted on.
So this will go before the Board of Commissioners in January, without a recommendation from the planning commission.
Mr. Clark, that means you seconded the...
I believe that's the date. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One to go, two.
We're going to get started with application number four. This is the application of BET Investment Incorporated for the Zoning Text Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for the properties located at 1059, 1067, 1073 Old York Road, and 1062 Huntington Road, Abington, Pennsylvania. The applicant's proposed zoning text amendment would create a new use category, use H12 senior apartment units as a conditional use within the apartment office district. The zoning text amendment also proposes dimensional changes for the proposed new use, a list of new permitted accessory uses and other dimensional qualifiers. In addition, the applicant will present their plan for how the proposed zoning text amendment, zoning text amendment, will be applied to the site. The requested alterations to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map would allow for the construction of a 180-unit age-restricted development. The proposed plan plots the location of two buildings with frontier on Susquehanna Road and Old York Road. If the proposed zoning text amendment and zoning map amendment are approved by the Board of Commissioners, conditional use approval is required, and a land development plan would have to be submitted. These properties are located within Ward 7 of the township of Abington. And I believe the applicant is here. I would ask that, hopefully you're not planning a full presentation. I think most of us have heard it several times. I know the planning commission has. So in the interest of time, if you could highlight the changes that have been made for the text amendment and the zoning map, I would appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. We'll keep it brief.
Thank you.
Jennifer Wander, on behalf of the applicant BET Investments. With me tonight is Michael Markman with BET, along with John Kennedy, our land planner, as well as a few other of our professionals. We're here seeking a recommendation of approval for the proposed, two proposed amendments. One's an amendment to the zoning ordinance to create the H12 senior apartment unit use in the AO zoning district. And the second amendment is to the zoning map to rezone the subject properties to the AO district. If the Board of Commissioners is inclined to approve those two amendments, we will then need to file a conditional use application for the proposed project. So what we'd like to do tonight is have Mr. Markman give a very brief overview of the proposed project, and then have Mr. Kennedy, our land planner, just give a summary of the changes.
Thank you.
And I promise I'll be very brief. I'll zip through. So obviously, this is the plan which you've seen. It's got access on Old York Road and Susquehanna Road. Just a rendering on Susquehanna Road of what it would look like. It's four stories on Susquehanna Road, and it goes back to three stories back with the neighborhood behind it. This is the three-story building that would be on Old York Road. It's a smaller building, a separate building, and it's three stories high. It's lower than the YMCA. This is a rear view of the property, lush landscaping, courtyards, balconies. This is another rear view of the property with the same kind of elements, you know, very attractive architecture, and architecture that matches the surrounding area. This is the slide we showed from the back from Huntington Road, and what it'll look like from Huntington Road. And this is your visual image of it from Huntington Road, and what you will in fact see. This is just a view from the neighbor that's closest on Huntington Road of what they will see. Quickly going back, under the CS zoning, which is the front part of the piece, you could do a 45-foot building that's 50 feet from the residence, and that would be the view corridor. If you look, your view would be obstructed prior to the time you get to the building we would build. The second one shows the R3 zoning with the 35-foot building height and a 12-foot setback, which is under the current zoning. And as you can see, the view corridor would be obstructed prior to the time you would get to the building that we would build. And then lastly, if you look at, that's the nearest view corridor from the house that's closest, the existing YMCA building is practically on the property line. And if you look at the view corridor once again, your view would be, you would see more basically sky than you see with the existing YMCA building. So this just shows the traffic generation. Weekday morning, we have 195 less trips than are currently generated by the YMCA. We counted the YMCA, 195 less trips in the weekday morning. Weekday afternoon, we have 179 less trips. So this will substantially reduce traffic below what the traffic count is today. It'll be a substantial reduction in traffic, and the daily trips are reduced by 437. Just shows the traffic. You saw what it was before. I don't need to get into that. This is the tax impact of the property. The net taxes to the school district of Abington are $565,146. So the school district, every year, we get $565,146 in taxes. The annual net township impact is $99,744. So the total taxes that would be paid on this property that the township and the school district are not getting now would be $664,890. This just shows the location. And then I'm going to turn it over to John Kennedy.
Good evening, and I will also be brief. I believe that the members have a memorandum dated December 7th that we produced. And this is actually a summary of the changes in the ordinance since the last time that we were in front of the planning commission. And I'll just go through them very quickly. The first change, which is actually the biggest change, is item number one, and that is the fact that this is now a conditional use. Previously, this was not a conditional use. It was by right. To explain to the audience what that means is that there would be an additional hearing held. And so it's an extra step in the process for BET, but it means that there will be an extra chance for the public to review the plan and state their opinions. We also added two new development criteria so that this can limit where this can go, and that would be the 300-foot uninterrupted frontage requirement, and not more than one dwelling last used as a single-family dwelling can be on the site. This was just to alleviate some fears that some neighbors had in some areas, both around Abington Hospital and Holy Redeemer.
Sorry, can you repeat that? It was difficult to understand.
There were two additional development standards. These are the requirements, such as the minimum lot size and other standards. The standards in the ordinance right now require certain acreage, five acres, and also requires that they be located within 2,000 feet of a hospital. So the two that were added, one is 300 feet of uninterrupted frontage requirement, and not more than one dwelling last used as a single-family dwelling. The reason specifically why that was added, there was concern in the vicinity of Holy Redeemer that somebody could buy up a number of single-family lots, get the property rezoned, and could do a community like this, which would be a lot of ifs. But anyway, that would eliminate that possibility. The maximum, the impervious coverage was decreased, the maximum impervious, from 70% to 65%. The minimum green space was increased from 30% to 35%. Maximum front yard setback was added for the frontage on Old York Road. And I do just want to add that several of these items were added, some were from the planning commission's suggestion, but also from the county planning commission's suggestions. The maximum building length was shortened to 380 feet. And then there were two other design elements that were added to break up the facade. One was a requirement for a five-foot offset every 100 feet of length. And the second was for facades greater than 300 feet, there must be a large break that actually forms a courtyard, which would be a minimum of 400 square feet in area, and must be landscaped. The bonus section was basically completely revised. The bonuses themselves were lowered, and they now must be approved as part of the conditional use process. So the bonuses, as we would go through the process, if we went through, if the board approved the proposal, would have to provide basically more information on each of the bonuses. To quickly go through the bonuses, the largest bonuses for primary, that are primarily available are for the enhanced building materials and improved public spaces. These really just create higher-quality developments, and that's the whole point of the bonuses, is to improve the quality, the visual appeal or sustainability of the project itself. There was a bonus that was added for common open space that would allow a slight increase in impervious coverage. And this actually was something that is found in your ordinance in some of the other districts. The MS District and the Business District also contains bonuses. And it was at the suggestion of Montgomery County Planning Commission that we take a look at this. And just to explain why this was added, because we did actually change the impervious coverage, it's a little bit deceiving. The impervious coverage is the amount of covered area, area covered with buildings and pavement. And there's also a requirement in the ordinance for what's called green area. Green area is a little bit misleading in the sense that it is literally the opposite of impervious coverage. However, what that would mean, it was suggested that we think about including some finished outdoor spaces, improved open spaces, such as hardscaped plazas, planted areas. Under the ordinance, that would not count towards green area, even though it obviously is an amenity and is a landscape improvement. So that's why that bonus was added. We also had bonuses to de-emphasize and hide the parking. And one of the other changes was the bonus for the parking garage. Structured parking now is tied to one of two ways of doing it, both of which produce a higher-quality project, in my opinion. Any kind of structured parking now must be actually buried in the ground. And that's one of the things that we've done, is the parking is below grade level. What that does is it's important, because it actually reduces the heights of the building. So it is something that is much more expensive than just building a parking garage, but it has a significant visual impact on the building itself. And the county also wanted to add something, another option, that if a parking garage were built that was just a non-grade parking garage, that it must be wrapped with some kind... kind of commercial or residential-type space. However, the option that we would be proposing would be putting the parking below grade, which would bring down the heights of the buildings. There's also a bonus for decorative treats, streetscaping, which we had previously, but that's been made more specific. It's now tied to the streetscape standards in the MS District. And the bonuses for educational resource and community heritage preservation bonuses now must include more specific information, and they are, again, defined as part of the conditional use. The same thing for off-site traffic improvement bonus. Those have to be more fully described, and they are evaluated at the conditional use. The other changes are fairly minor. There was a clarification for the Building Grounds and Management Clause, and also some clarification for the location of parking and sizes of tandem spaces. And then the last item that was added was a reference to update the comprehensive use matrix in the ordinance. And that is the extent of all of the changes that have been made. They have been made after listening to all of your suggestions from the last meeting, also meeting with the planning commission and meeting with staff, and also some of the comments that we've received from the public, because we have had those filtered through to us. So we've tried to incorporate as much of that as we can and respond to all of the comments.
Thank you.
And just very, one last thing we're going to present, and then we'll turn it over to you. Just leave it up. So we kind of went through some of the community concerns that were expressed. One other thing that keeps being expressed, which is not accurate, is that there's going to be more schoolchildren from this project. I want to make it clear, this project will not allow any schoolchildren. The second is a density issue. H-12 Seaboard Harbor community manager proposed a density of 24 units per acre, and then we're asking for potentially another 12 units per acre if we do the quality project we're talking about. Abington Terrace will have approximately 48 residents per acre compared to Penn State Lionsgate, which has 145 residents per acre. The height, H-12 amendment provides a maximum height of 50 feet. The 50 feet is restricted to more than 100 feet away from residential properties. The maximum height within 100 feet of residential properties is 40 feet. The maximum building height within the CS District right now is 45 feet. So we're going from 45 to 50 with CS, and that can occur only 50 feet away from the neighboring property. We're now moving that to 100 with the 50 feet. The maximum building height for R3 is 35 feet, but that can occur 12 feet away from the neighboring property. So that's moving away further, and as we showed, the view corridor will be better than if you were to build a house within 12 feet of that property. As far as height, Sunrise is currently 45 feet. We're asking for 50, will probably be 46 or 47. Penn State Lionsgate is 55 feet. We're asking for 50, will be 46 or 47. Abington Hospital is 65 feet. Abington YMCA is currently 45 feet. We're looking for a couple feet above that. And the Riddle Park is 65 feet, and we're looking for something substantially less than that. Where, as far as traffic, it will decrease traffic. Daily trips are decreased by 437 trips. Morning and afternoon are decreased by 374 trips. Setbacks, the interesting part is the front yard setback is, with the MS District Build Two Zone, is recommended by Montgomery County Planning Commission. So the side and rear setbacks are consistent with the current CS zoning and greater than the R3 zoning. So the setbacks, and we've been instructed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission to be consistent with the other zoning up and down Old York Road, to be no more than 25 feet away from the road, and that's why it is where it is. Also, we tried to move the buildings as close to the road as we could, so we could move them as far away from the neighborhood behind us as we in fact could. Stormwater design for the project will be required to comply with township and state regulations. They require that stormwater volumes and rates are reduced after development from the rates that exist prior to development. This will achieve through a combination of green roof technologies as well as underground detention and infiltration. It has to be better after we develop it. The building and design and aesthetic is contemporary farmhouse aesthetic with gable roofs, masonry stone walls, replicating the low quaker walls, which we've heard in many meetings that, you know, up and down Old York Road, and then work with the context and complement the existing appealing architecture adjacent to the site and throughout the township. So we've modified the architect to try to make it consistent with other things in the township. So with that, we're done. Thank you for your time. We tried to be brief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open up to the planning commission for any comments on any of these changes.
That comment you just made at the end about the NSC PC, is that the letter we just got where they had, right, we got a letter from them?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we did receive a letter recommending approval from the county planning commission with some mainly design comments that can be addressed in the conditional use or land development.
So we're not going to see that, because if this goes as a zoning text amendment, there'd be a separate hearing, land development would be separate.
Yes, correct.
Yes, it will come back to us again.
Right.
And you're referring to the letter from December 6th, correct?
Yeah. We just, we just saw.
All right.
Yeah, mics.
Anyone else on the planning commission? Mark?
Yes, I can just ask you one question. What was the purpose of including the Huntington Road property in with the zoning change? Why couldn't that have stayed residentially zoned? I mean, we were doing a text amendment. If there was any kind of transfer of development rights, it could have been written in. I just, and maybe I need to understand the reasoning behind the change of zoning for there. I would think it would be added protection if it were left residentially zoned.
We're more than willing, as a condition of approval, to de-restrict that as just to open space, but we wanted it to, you know, obviously to be included in our calculations that are required for the approval. But as part of our conditions of approval of zoning, we will agree to de-restrict that property to be in fact open space.
Thank you.
Mark, I have a question too, before we open it up to the folks in attendance. The letters that we've been receiving over the last couple of days, are they available for the public to read? These are from people both with approval and not approving.
The letters that we've received, both in favor of and opposition to, would be available to anybody by way of a right-to-know request. We generally do not post letters of support or letters of opposition written from the public on our website. The information that goes on the website is generally limited to reviews that are done either through the county or through the township, or through the township's third-party engineers or traffic design folks. So I would tell you, any of the letters that we received, and they were still coming in pretty good this morning. We've printed them, we've added them to the file, they're dated, received today.
All right.
So they are available if anybody does need to see them. I would just say, as they file a right-to-know request, it's a township's policy, we release them.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd like to open it up to the audience. If you would come up and please remember to speak into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Kim Cease. I live at 1443 Woodland Road in the Penn State Abington neighborhood. I've written everyone on the planning commission and to all 15 of the commissioners, and I just encourage you, if you haven't already read my letter, to read it, and also consider the feedback I'll share tonight. I'm completely opposed to this entire project. I 100% agree with the residents' comments that have been made at all of the previous meetings leading up to tonight regarding reduced sightlines, more impervious surface, less green space, more traffic, more congestion. None of it is positive. I could go on with the stats, but you know them all already. What I'm most concerned about and want to highlight tonight are the proposed zoning changes. We have rules and regulations for a reason, to protect the integrity of so many aspects of our township. BET bought the YMCA property on a contingency. That contingency being that they'd get approval for what they wanted to develop there. They didn't buy the property simply to build a senior community. They bought it for its high revenue potential. What makes them so special that they can come in and rewrite our zoning and come up with their own density category? Best-case scenario, I'd love to see the site turned into a township park or other community-type facility, but I get it, that's not realistic, and that doesn't bring in the revenue that this project will. However, I do not support a developer coming in and trying to change our code, which, as you know, so many just spent countless hours rewriting last year. Please know that regardless of what they claim, BET is not meeting us in the middle with 36 units per acre. That is a drastic change from everything else in the vicinity of this area and greatly undermines the integrity of all the surrounding neighborhoods. Not to mention removing the partial community service zoning does nothing good for the township. Where does it end? The YMCA site is not even my own backyard, and I won't have to look at it, look at whatever is built there every single day like many of the residents in this room tonight will. But I've taken time out of my day to show up because this will gravely impact everyone in our community. If this proposal is ever approved, I respectfully ask that you strongly consider it happening within the limits of our zoning regulations. Many other developers are watching, some are here tonight. If this proposal gets approved as-is, the whole triangle of land within the boundaries of Old York, Susquehanna, and the fairway will be bulldozed. How will this happen? BET will tell you that their new H-12 zoning category will only apply to them and Meadowbrook Apartments. We all know that's not true. The developers of those two adjacent properties will be banging on your doors to further alter their zoning requirements and density. They fought with the township for over 10 years already, and it will continue. Not to mention, every other developer in town will be watching and waiting to see what happens. Our taxpayers will be left paying with lawsuits that will follow if this is approved as-is, and other developers, similar amendments are not. The ripple effect will be huge, and I urge you to consider that. I know you all have a hard job to do in considering this proposal, there's absolutely no denying that. But last time I checked, in my own job and in yours, we don't get to change the rules and invent our own. Please do not let a developer get away with doing so to the detriment of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ervin Shorsh, 1579 Warner Road, and I come in two capacities tonight. One is a homeowner at 1579, and one is a business owner at 1841 Huntington Pike. And in that capacity, I employ local residents of Abington Township as well. As the young lady before me so eloquently laid out, this H-12 apartment zoning means a significant increase in concentration of residents. It's an intense development, unlike anything we have similar. Right on Old York Road, where we have lots of traffic already, and I understand that they did some studies, but I think this would certainly lead particularly with traffic congestion, which we certainly need to be well aware of. The idea of going to a unit density of 36 seems preposterous. There's no precedent for it, no need for it. My family, members of my family have lived in Abington Township for over 50 years. We've never had this kind of concentration. I see no reason to denigrate our township just to suit the developer. Doesn't make sense to me. And also, if we look at the congestion issues that are unlikely going to, will likely come along with sewer issues, water runoff issues, the concentrations are going to be high, unlike anything we've experienced with the YMCA that's there right now. As was mentioned from the prior speaker, I'm very concerned that if BET gets the approval, other developers will come right behind them and say, "How about us? Why can't we do the same thing? Why can't we grab other parcels that are around the township and get the same kind Tomorrow morning, we're meeting with our real estate attorney to consider our legal options in terms of filing a possible injunction or suit, and we strongly urge the township to put off the December 18th meeting. I'm not sure why it was scheduled right between the Jewish holidays and the Christian holidays, but it seems like an inappropriate time when we're all getting together to be with our families to say, "Come for a meeting like this." So we strongly recommend that we postpone that meeting to a more convenient time after the holidays. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Marilyn Shorsh, 1579 Warner Road. I fully agree with everything that has been said by the two previous speakers. While the Y property does bear need for some improvement and reuse, time marches on, and we do need to live in the real world, the far-reaching zoning that's being proposed will affect our entire township. That's my concern. That's the prize here. It opens us up to lawsuits. It opens our citizens up to loss of value of their homes. For most Americans, their home is the single greatest asset of value. They have paid that mortgage, they've maintained the lawn, they pay taxes every year, and if those values drop, it is a direct harm to our neighbors. This is serious business. The AO zoning proposed can affect numerous properties throughout the township, and I'm asking the planning commission, do you have a list of all the properties potentially impacted or changed by this zoning if it is passed?
We don't have a complete list of all of the residents in the area. We have a partial list.
No, I mean, like a list of all the properties that fall into that zoning category. Two streets of frontage, 300 feet, five acres, 2,000 feet from the hospital, 400 feet from public transit. So have we done a study? Do we know how many properties potentially are open to this kind of development if this zoning is passed?
No, we don't.
We don't? Okay.
We kind of do, because based on how the ordinance is written, it pretty much, and Mr. Markman, I know you've said this at other meetings, but I don't think there's any other AO zoning that meets that criteria in the township.
Meadowbrook Apartments.
Meadowbrook Park, okay, one other one.
How many acres is Meadowbrook Apartments? Does anybody know?
It's like 25 acres.
Okay, well, that's a lot of people. I'm also very concerned about a glut of rental housing on the market in our township. Once these Goliath buildings and properties are built, if they sit empty, it falls on the township, whether they become derelict, whether they go into bankruptcy, if they have to be repurposed in order to make them solvent or useful, that falls on us. Once the building is there, it's our problem, whether we wanted it or not. Thousands of apartments on the market in Abington Township makes us, I don't live in Ballackinwood for a reason, and that's what this is turning our community into, a place of lower quality of life, higher traffic congestion, residents concerned that the life they've always lived is going to change and that their home values are going to drop. I take this zoning very, very seriously, and as my husband said, we are discussing our options with counsel in the morning. I greatly urge you to at least, at very least, delay the meeting of the 18th and not take any votes until all these factors are considered on a far-reaching basis, not just on the basis of the property at York and Susquehanna. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Fellerman. I live at 1074 Wynwood Road. I've lived in Abington since 2004, and I'm a licensed architect in Pennsylvania with specialties in historic preservation and sustainable design. As an architect, I believe it is my civic duty to ensure my projects are good neighbors to the surrounding community, that they are appropriate to the neighborhood context and scale and style, and that features such as history, open space, sustainability, and walkability are incorporated into my projects. BET's proposal does not meet these criteria. It is out of scale for its environment, eliminates valuable open space, is set too close to the street to be comfortable for pedestrians, demolishes existing buildings of significant design and historic value to this community, and also negatively impacts the historic cemetery. Even more disturbing, BET is not seeking a variance or waiver for its project, but a revision to Abington's zoning code opened the door to more projects that will negatively impact Abington. In this time of diminishing resources, this project is planning to demolish the existing YMCA building, as well as the adjacent funeral home buildings. Given that the BET project includes a proposed gym and pool, it seems obvious that the original portion of the YMCA building should be incorporated into the project and saved. Original Y buildings are being lost throughout the country, and the building could easily be repurposed. The demolition of the Y building and the neighboring structures, as well as the impact to the cemetery, illustrates BET's refusal to acknowledge what Abington values. We don't have to look too far for a better solution, just across the street at Sunrise. The building is set well back from the street in a landscaped area, and the project incorporated saving the Abington Schoolhouse. This proposal of BET's will create a future of out-of-scale and out-of-context development in Abington, turning our comfortable neighborhood environments into a subcity of overscaled, overwhelming, and overcrowded buildings. It will drastically change our community, and not for the better. This Philly Inquirer article in Sunday, December 2nd, profiles similar changes in Chester County. County that have caused residents, longtime residents, to no longer be able to afford to live there because of developer-driven code changes that have allowed for high-density apartment buildings. This is to the extent highlighted in the article that longtime residents of the community are now homeless. This is the result of developer-driven and not community-driven code changes. Our zoning code should reflect our community values, values of historic preservation, resource conservation, sustainability, and open space. BET would do well to stop turning its back on the context of the Abington community. They are forcing our community to accept an urban-scale solution. They should be sent back to the drawing board to return with an appropriately scaled approach that recognizes and retains the unique features of this site and our community. I urge you to require BET to embrace and enhance our community and our neighbors instead of tearing it down.
Good evening, my name is Heidi Kleiman. I live on 1785 Brook Road, and that's at the bottom of Huntington Road. And I'm here just to address the push to urbanize this section of Abington. Our neighbors were, well, I guess our neighbors feel that there is a target now on our little section of 14 houses. We were in the conversations with Penn State when the Lions Gate dorms were being constructed, and we had overwhelming support from our neighbors for the construction of the dorms. They were not in residential areas, there was a synagogue beside the Lions Gate, and there was a office building. So, when Mr. Markman compares Lions Gate to his development, I feel like we're comparing apples and oranges, and they shouldn't be compared. The other thing that we learned, so when we attended the conversations about the dorm, we approved the dorm, and we thought it was a great design, but it was concerning that a representative from Abington said that they really wanted to change Abington into a college town. And that went in line with something that we read from the Jewish exponent by Michael Alkin in 2013, where they interviewed Mr. Markman about BET's organizational goals. And I'll just read it. It says, "The organization's emphasis, particularly in recent years, has been to create a sense of community in its various projects, an atmosphere not unlike that found on campuses from University Park to Berkeley." I went to the Penn State main campus for four years in my undergraduate, so I know exactly what that looks like. I know, I lived in some of those properties that looked exactly like our homes, and they had these high rises beside them, and what they turned into, they were chopped up to be rentals for Penn State students, or turned into Airbnb's. So, we only have a few houses. Already, one has been picked off in our neighborhood. There's an agreement with another on top of the hill, the Germaines. We don't know what that agreement is, because they have not told us. And so, that leaves 12 houses. So, we have, you know, a few houses on the Huntington side that is near Old York Road, so they are going to be in back of this huge building. Who wants to live there? So, their property values are going to go down, and they're either going to sell, or they're going to probably succumb to renting out their properties to students in 10 years' time. Like, it's going to be the erosion of our little community. And it's important to keep these communities. I just want to highlight some of the people in our community, or in our neighborhood, who really give back to the community. We have Lori McMahon, who does the Barnes &amp; Noble night at Highland, and that brings in maybe $1,100 to $1,500 in a small evening for books at the Highland School. And she's done that for six years, so her little contribution that night brings in about $7,000 for the Huntington, or the Highland Elementary Library. We have Van Hellerslia, who runs the Science Day at Highland, and she brings her PhD students into the neighborhood to help run the Science Day, and organizes all the volunteers. We have Diane Marsh and her daughter, who run an arts program, a theater program, at the Abington Arts Center. We have my husband and Van Hellerslia's husband, who are committed to being coaches in the, at Ace United, your community soccer clubs. Like, these people are not people that were just stating, "We want to save our houses." Yes, we want to save our houses, but we are a close community, and we are committed to, we're committed to putting roots and giving of our time. I mean, I volunteer also in girls' clubs. I'm a marching band parent. My daughter will be drum major next year, so I will be having tons of students in my house for those leadership meetings. Like, we are opening our doors, and our hearts, and our time to pour into your kids or your neighbors' kids. And so, we ask that you really do whatever it takes to maintain our community, and that this, it goes down in density, and it fits the scale of what is appropriate for that area. Thank you. Van Hellerslia, 1047 Huntington Road, and I agree with everything that's been shared tonight. I want to reiterate the fact that our current zoning ordinance was just approved in 2017. This 350-plus-page document was the result of significant numbers of hours of research, expertise, and thought. And it's clear that there was an intent by the authors to protect our neighborhoods from overdevelopment. It was written for such a time as this. It was written for such a time as this. It was written for such a time as this. Why? Because we are at a threat of being overdeveloped. Our zoning code that was just passed is now at threat of being changed. Why? There is no just cause for it with the existence of randic that's coming up with Rital Waters, with Penn State Lions Gate. Our population density of within this .5-mile radius will be increased by 55%. How is that justified when there's only a 2% projected increase of population between 2010 to 2040, per the Montgomery County statistics? I see a disproportionate increase in volume when the replacement rate is not going to be there. So, I ask that you vote against the text amendment, and I ask that you vote against the zoning remount. R3 already has E10. Why do you need further changes? I think that the 2017 ordinance, zoning ordinance, was written very well, and there's no need to change it. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kaki Evans. I happen to be a member of the Abington Township Environmental Advisory Council. As you know, I'm going to ask you, did you get our letter, and do you have any questions?
We did receive your letter, thank you.
Okay, and were you able to open up the links and all that?
Yes, it was a very good letter, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
All right. So, just for the record, one question I have is, when you said about what's posted publicly, if the, we have a general membership meet, or we have our EAC that's open to the public tomorrow, and if the EAC wanted the letter as a township commit council to be posted, is that possible? So, that the public could see it on the township's website?
Maria, as an official township entity, you would post the review letter on our website? I would think that's something we would do, see EAC.
Yeah.
So, I would think the answer to your question would be...
Okay, so I'll ask them if they feel comfortable. I'm not going to take up more time by reading the letter and all that stuff, but, you know, just for the record, we did, you know, make the recommendation to keep the existing zoning as it is. We looked at the density bonuses, and I just have a couple of questions. In the current township zoning, are density bonuses right now only in the MS districts?
No.
No? Okay. And where else, I mean, but this is obviously, this is not an MS district, right?
No, that's part of the text amendment.
So, where else in the, thank you, Mr. Penical, for answering my questions.
You have bonus densities that are built into the BC district, or sections that allow residential...
Is this considered BC, or no?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, the way, in this area, and what they're proposing, has there ever been density bonuses before?
Not within the current ordinance.
Okay, so this is different, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. I also, you know, just, we felt that the proposed density bonuses failed in terms of the way the text amendment is written, because it focuses on environmental improvement, design sustainability, and we felt that these things were not in keeping with that. And we did propose other things. I wanted to ask you at the April, I'm sorry, the August Planning Commission meeting, and I don't think anybody's here tonight from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. There is? Oh, hello? How are you? Hi, maybe you can answer, if that's appropriate, can you answer my questions? So, what I noticed in the minutes, and I was also at that meeting, it said that Mr. Markowitz, it's recorded in the minutes as I said, is that he would like to see a building length of 150 to 200 linear feet, so that the building is not perceived as too massive. And he also said that green areas on top of parking structures should be written into the zoning text so that it is minding, and that there should be adequate green space. According to now, has that, is that, I'm just surprised that there was no mention of the, in the letter, I mean, does this plan comply with the 150 to 200 square feet? I believe it does, does it? That Mr. Mark, Markowitz was talking about in August?
You said you were talking about building length?
Yes.
In the most recent ordinance, there is a break in, or a break in the facades that are required for buildings that are over a certain length.
Okay.
So, I think that was the, I think probably on the staff level, that was discussed as a compromise.
I, is that correct? I thought it was the entire building length that he was talking, I mean, I was there that night, and I...
No, Mr. Kennedy testified earlier that they revised the ordinance, not to limit the building length as requested by the planning, by Montgomery County Planning Commission, but to build in offsets into the building to break up the overall facade run.
Okay, all right, well, I was just surprised by the letter with that. I also, I think there may be an error in our letter, but I wanted to ask you all. We didn't get the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter until, I think it was posted maybe yesterday, and that caused the delay, I would say, in our EAC letter. But it says in the letter that the acreage is 4.6, what is it? It says it has 4.64, and the text amendment, proposed text amendment, says it has to be a minimum of five acres, and in our letter, are we wrong in our letter to you? Does it, is it definitely five acres, or are we correct?
It's five.
It is five? What's the exact?
Five acres.
So, does the Monco Planning Commission letter need to be corrected as well as ours?
I think the amount of lot area that's being rezoned is...
Oh, okay.
Is slightly less than five.
4.6, okay.
But the entire parcel is more than five acres.
Okay, all right, so it does satisfy that. Okay, and then, this is such an unusual circumstance, and I really hope, when we gave our comments for density bonuses, but really, I really hope that, I don't mean to be flip to say if you're going to, I just feel this is a moving train that can't be stopped because of the revenues that the township and the school district will glean from it. But I hope that if this does happen, that we really get some true green advantages to our community. Like I said, we came against it, but, you know, we quoted from the township's current comprehensive plan, I gave some other recommendations, and I really want, you know, this is an opportunity, and for the reasons I said before, it's very unusual that you have these density bonuses. It's never been granted in these areas. So, now I'm going to take off my EAC hat, and I'm going to wear my Kaki Evans hat, and I just wanted to bring to your attention that, as you know, our township is a three-star rated community that's merged with the U.S. Green Building Council, and we are now known as a lead city. And a lead city, by the way, there are 75 lead cities, they're as small as 2,500, so don't be thrown off by the term "city," it could be municipality. But one of the, if you look at sustainability holistically, as you all know, it's the economic, environmental, and the social impact. The reason I say it's really had an impact is that one of the star metrics is looking at set-asides for affordable housing, and so even though this is part and parcel to sustainability, we felt that this was beyond the purview of our EAC, so I'm bringing this out. They have a, that one of three conditions are met, and that means affordable housing being defined as households earning 80% or less of the area median income without government subsidies, or, and that, or 10%, and then, so, in terms of development, that you consider that 10% of total residential units are affordable and may, and that's the kind of thing that, if you are going to grant density bonuses, I'm advocating for tonight. Another option would be 10% of residential units are dedicated to subsidized housing, and the third being that at least 1% of residential units dedicated as long-term affordable housing units that are deeply subsidized or deeply affordable for very and extremely low-income households, and that would be earning between 30% and 50% of, you know, the normal. So, I'm really asking you, if you have your head straight on this, let's really do something great for Abington Township. This is part and parcel. As I've said before, our EAC is against it, but I'm appealing to you, because there are commissioners who talk about, "What about my seniors on fixed incomes?" I happen to be one of them, and I'm sure there are others in this room. And it is very hard to find affordable housing, and, you know, I'm asking that you consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kaki.
Joe Rozak, 1927 Susquehanna Road, I'm back again. I heard again, this, one of the selling points for this project is the intake of almost $700,000. To me, that's a lot of money. But in terms of Abington, that's 1% of your budget for next year. 1%, a penny on the dollar. Wisdom should prevail over here, for the environment and quality, not for 1%. Once that building goes up, if it goes up, as somebody said before, you can't take it down very easily. Once that space is used up, it's gone. Keep it! We're using it up too fast. Sure, the Y needs to be, you know, it's not there anymore, it's not a beautiful-looking building, but you don't see it, and there's a lot more green space. Let's stay within the zoning. Planning took wisdom. Follow it. The zoning commission, your planning commission, the future, not tomorrow. The future way out from now.
Yes, Richard Veeth, 1719 Edgehill Road. You don't need to be a licensed architect like myself, as so many have eloquently already said, to understand that this building is totally inappropriate for the site. This is the heart of the historic center of Abington, with primary view of the church and the cemetery. To change the community service zoning, which clearly is intended to give back to the community, and trade it with something that steals from the community and puts in a building that, I'm sorry, does not look like a farmhouse, it's like calling a Great Dane a lapdog, but it's, it's, it's just, I'm just adding to the pile here. Thank you.
Herb McMahon, 1046 Huntington Road. I just want to say how proud I am of everybody that spoke here tonight. I want to thank you for coming out. I don't know if I can do a better job. I am going to ask for a no vote. My major concern is the text amendment, and the last meeting we had, you all voted. The vote was for, against, and for, for proceeding with advertising this. And a 50-50 split is not a very hearty recommendation, it's actually pretty awful. And that, that vote, I don't see any reason why it should be any better tonight. The recommendations that were given, I have not heard anything new. The, the, the density is still 250% above what's recommended. I can go over the other stats, the building coverage is still 43% more than what's allowed, the impervious coverage... The impervious coverage is still 25% more than what's allowed. The maximum height is still 25% above. And when you all voted, the interesting thing was, I went back and I reviewed the tapes, and I read the transcripts. Every one but one of you mentioned that you did not like the text amendment. And I was so proud of you all for identifying that and just expressing it. And I don't see where it's any different tonight. Mr. Russell was the only one that didn't say that he was against the text amendment. Every single other commissioner here said they were against. The other point I wanted to make was, I don't see there's any compelling reason to allow this text amendment. I feel that my zoning rights are under attack so that BET and Mr. Markman can make more money. And basically, this is all driven by greed. The wanting extra bonuses and asking for 36 units per acre when, you know, current H1 is 16 is all about greed. It's all money. And I think that that's, greed is no reason to allow a text amendment and for me to have my zoning rights thrown out the window and our zoning laws rewritten by a developer. The other thing I wanted to mention was, Mr. Penical, in his remarks in a written document that I saw, I think it was number, item number three, that mentioned spot zoning. I really think that this is spot zoning. I think that you would be hard-pressed to put this anywhere else, you know, based on the text amendment. And that, to me, defines spot zoning. The other thing I wanted to mention was, in our zoning, there's a section 102 that talks about mitigating the impact of more intense uses and maintaining the character of the surrounding homes and minimizing congestion and traffic. I guess that's thrown out the window, too. I think that is just, this project is everything that that section is not. You know, it's just awful. And the Old Jerk Road study, page 199, paragraph 5, recommends 15 to 25 units per acre, and this is calling for 36. I guess that study's out the window, too. And so I'm going to wrap up quickly, because in the morning I'll be doing anesthesia over here at Abington Hospital, and I want to be bright and on the money here. So I'm going to wrap up. I'm going to ask you for a no vote. And I think everybody here that has spoken has spoken so eloquently, and they're going to ask you for a no vote also. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, and I would like to wrap this up as quickly as possible, so please come up and speak. But if there's anyone else that wants to speak, if it's something new that we haven't heard, that's fine, but otherwise, just you can come and say, I agree with everything that's been said. Please proceed.
Hi, I'm Christine Dardaris, 1065 Huntington Road. I agree with everything my nice neighbors have said tonight, and I appreciate all their hard work and their eloquent words. I'm directly across the street from the Sharpwell residence, which is being purchased, if this is allowed to go through. So I don't know if you've ever been down our street before, but it's a beautiful street.
We're not allowed, though.
It's not a through street, but I invite you to slowly drive through. I fell in love with it the minute I drove through. And there's a lot of character there for being so close to such a busy, two busy streets. And just imagine, close your eyes and imagine your beautiful neighbor's house across the street being replaced by a five, four-story apartment complex, and all the headaches and construction and mess, traffic, runoff, whatever, replaces your neighbor's house across the street. That's not why I moved to Abington. So I agree with what Herb said. You all were against the text amendment, except for Mr. Russell. And I agree with my neighbors to please vote against the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So I agree with everything that everybody said. And I think it's very notable, especially for those of you who are serving this community and nominated here by the commissioners whose duty it is to serve this community, that it's notable that there are not a crowd of people coming up and asking you to please approve this, okay? And this is really what the community looks like that you talk to. I just want to clarify a couple of things, and I don't want to drag it out because of the time. But one thing that has been constant is the traffic, the issue of the traffic, which unbelievably, this is a building that will serve probably 300 to 500 people, somewhere in that amount, if we have, you know, let's say somewhere just under 200 apartments. The YMCA traffic that is being compared served, I believe, in the neighborhood of 10,000 residents. And when you have 10,000 people being served, and you're comparing the traffic for a couple hundred people, I think that needs to be a huge concern. So if you want to talk about traffic, let's talk about all the other things that are going to come from the precedent that's being set here, and the developers increasing their density all through the township. The right-to-know requests I filed almost a month ago and was not granted the courtesy of having those papers by this meeting. And I don't know for sure that I will be granted that before the next meeting. So I would like to see that happen, too. We do need to have those, and if people would like to have them posted, I think they should be posted. I think the community needs to see the balance here. And the other thing is that, well, okay, that was covered by somebody, so I'll quit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else with something new to add?
My name is Sue Salmon. I'm not a member of this community, and I did not intend to speak tonight. I am a member of the Abington Presbyterian Church community that sits right across the street from this proposed building. My mother and my father are buried in the cemetery that no one seems to be talking about. It is a very, very historic cemetery, and it means an awful lot to the members of our church community. I agree with everything that is being said here, and I strongly oppose this. This not only is concerning to me, this is heartbreaking to myself and my family.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Detwiler, 1116 Penmore Place. I agree with everything that's been said about the changes to the text amendment. Just a couple questions. At a previous planning meeting, we were told there would be an independent traffic study, and I was wondering about the availability of the independent traffic study. And the new information that was presented today about the pocket park being changed to open space, I don't know what zoning that means. Like, does it stay residential? Or what does, what does that mean? So I think that information should be presented at some point. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's one more person?
Diane Marsh, 1779 Brook Road. Quickly, I just wanted to bring it back around, because we had the Brandalini, and then we have the BET. Back to the focus of under siege, this whole area between Penn State, BET, Rital Waters, and Brandalini. This is a huge impact. I probably represent the oldest member with my mom. I live in my grandparents' home, brought that up before. My mom's 80-some years old. Anyway, this is a longstanding neighborhood. The YMCA is historic in nature. Comparing the height of the building to what the YMCA is now doesn't make, does not really impact us that much in that it's the density that goes beyond, well beyond just the height of the building. So, yeah, just the urban, the urban siege that's going on and this whole area. I think as commissioners, if we looked at the zoning and decisions were already made, that you should be looking at all that's happening, and that it shouldn't be just a one, 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 one decision-making. And comparing to what the Penn State already got, we don't necessarily agree with the height that they already have. So that doesn't help us to say, well, this built, this proposed building is not as high as that, or whatever. That doesn't, that doesn't help if we don't already agree with that. So, thank you.
I will be brief. Bernadette Wilkinson, 1245 Bakiis Avenue. I want for the record to know that I am speaking as a resident and a taxpayer of 22 years. The one thing I want to touch on is there is a lot of people here that are against it, and you see them physically. But have you noticed the signs that have been all over the community? So it's not just this group of people that live on Huntington. I live on Bakiis. I'm not directly affected, but I am going to be affected in the long run. And my street has several signs on it. So if you drive around, and you look, and you see those signs, there are more people out there that do not want this project other than the people that are on Huntington or just the neighboring areas right there. So again, I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, and I really hope that you guys don't allow it to be changed, because, as I said the last meeting, it will be a snowball effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick note about the signs. I was proud to participate in distributing about 300 or 400 of them. So they're out there.
I think we've all seen them. Thank you. Thank you. So I would like to wrap this up tonight, and I'll start off with my opinion on this. I'm sure all of you have read through the minutes from the August meeting. I was not able to attend that meeting, but I did forward my minutes to Ron Rosen and Kathy, who were running the meeting. And I'll read them again, because I have not changed my opinion. I am not in favor of the current text amendment as proposed by BET investments for the project at the YMCA. The redevelopment of the YMCA property will profoundly affect the character of the streetscape, quality of life in the surrounding neighborhood, and development in the township. And further, I share everyone's frustration with the fact that we have to go through these zoning text amendments. And this is the third one that I can recall in the last couple of years that we've had to go through. Unfortunately, it is allowed by our municipal planning code, and so these will continue to happen. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
So it is a frustration, and I knew many of the people that worked so hard on that zoning ordinance, and it was so well-done. But those challenges will continue. So that is my opinion on this. I'd like to open up to the commission, and then let's make a motion on this. Anyone like to offer an opinion?
I guess I'm not offended by changes to zoning. I mean, and zoning is imperfect, no matter how you slice it. It was an exhaustive process that we were involved in. You know, we're not developers. We're not, we're just, you know, appointed volunteers looking out for the interest of everybody, residents, the locals, and everyone. You know, my opinion on this hasn't changed either. I think that this is a good project for Abington as a whole, and that the impacts, that there have been revisions that have been made through the process. We've been seeing this, I think, since March. We've had several meetings, and I'd be happy to make a motion when everybody speaks to move forward.
Right, thank you. Would anyone else like to offer an opinion?
Well, my opinion is, this is basically an amendment to the zoning text to add this new use H12 for senior housing into the AO district. As the text is written, I would not be in favor of approval of it.
Thank you. Okay, Dale, I believe you have made a motion, would like to make a motion, and we can start with your motion, and...
So we do, do we have to do two? We're doing two motions? Like, this is just to recommend the zoning text amendment, and then a separate one for the zoning map amendment?
You can do both of them at the same time. I think they're so linked that I would find it unlikely that someone would vote one way for one.
Right. No, I just didn't know if there was a...
You can, you can vote either to recommend or not recommend, both.
Okay, so I'd recommend with a recommendation for approval of the zoning text amendment and zoning map amendment.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, there is no second, I believe. All right, so parliamentary procedure, we can make another motion?
You can. The motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you.
So as of right now, there is no motion on the floor.
All right. Is there another motion to be proposed?
I guess I would make a motion to not approve the proposed zoning text change and not to change the, not to rezone the property to AO.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Please be quiet. The meeting is still in session.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we needed to approve the minutes from our last meeting. My apologies. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.